To the planning committee, my name is councillor Keith Driver, I'm the Chair of the Planning Committee and I'll be chairing the meeting. To begin the meeting, there are a few matters of housekeeping. Action in the event of emergency. There are no practice alarms planned for this meeting, so if the alarm sounds, please evacuate the city hall by going down the main staircase. And to the War Memorial in front of the City Hall. I would say that, but the fire alarm is actually going to go off at 12 o'clock. To commemorate the end of the victory in Europe for the two minutes silence, so we will have a break. About five to twelve for anyone who wish to go outside and mark their respect for two minutes and then come back. Thank you. This meeting has been transcribed streamed to the council's YouTube page and will be available after the meeting. With speakers, please use the microphones at all times and speak directly into the microphone. And will participation, please mute their microphones when not speaking. I'll just want to go around the members to introduce themselves, as it's new. Top in top, so if you can start on my left who you are. And can you use the microphone tools?
Absolutely, yeah. I'm councillor Mike Sands, I'm the Deputy Chair for Planning at the moment.
Good morning, I'm councillor Liam Calvert.
Morning councillor Karen Davis.
Hi, I'm councillor Ashanes.
Morning, I'm councillor Carly Harper.
I'm councillor Paul Kendrick.
Councillor Judith Lubbock.
Good morning, I'm councillor Sue Sands.
Good morning, I'm councillor Julie Young.
Coming down the other side, officers, could you explain who you are, please?
Sarah Hinchcliffe, Senior Planner.
Alexandra Cosmo, Senior Committee Officer.
Good morning, my name's David Parkin, I'm the Development Manager for the City Council.
I am Danny Howard and I'm Planner for the first item.
Robert Carmichael, Democratic Services Manager.
Thank you all for that. Members are allowed to use the lecture, lecture call devices to access their meeting papers and visitors are welcome to use mobile phones and other devices including cameras, but please use them discreetly. And let, and set them to silent so they're not device or camera flash functions. We will have a short break about five to twelve. End at two o'clock until any business left to be restored. We will also be serving a two minutes silence which was set at noon to commemorate the ED. If we move on to our agenda now, apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair, we have apologies from councillor Smith and councillor Kane and no substitutions.
Okay, we move on to declarations of interest now, the last Democratic Services Manager to say a word on this first.
Thank you Chair, it's come to my attention that members have been contacted by an outside party about the first application that's on the agenda. And it's been, I've found out that some of us have responded, I'm just going to ask the committee, could members who have responded to said objectives confirm that they haven't indicated any predeterminable by, per, excuse me, predetermination or bias in their comments backed that? We could just go down the table or if that's okay Chair.
No predetermination or bias Chair.
No predetermination.
I too have an interest to declare.
Thank you Chair, I am a resident microphone turns itself off, I'm a resident of Eton Ward and I live opposite City of Norwich School. It's a different location to the residents who are represented here today. I believe I am predisposed on this issue, but I don't believe that I am predetermined.
Thank you councillor Lubbock.
I have an interest to declare an item one insofar as I have supported the objectives of this application.
So you'll be speaking and then leaving the meeting?
That's right.
Thank you. Anyone else on any other? Okay, thank very much, we move on.
Sorry Chair, sorry, I should have, I should have added as I did. The microphone keeps turning itself off. I have had calls to contact City of Norwich School about the operation of their site previously. And I did declare that at the last meeting, but again, I don't believe I am predetermined.
Okay, thank you. Minutes to the last planning application, do we agree there quick record with councillor Lubbock?
Thank you Chair, it says under declarations of interest that councillor Lubbock declared a registerable interest as she was involved in the school. I don't believe I said that, I believe I said what I have just previously said to say that I had supported the objectives on this matter.
Yeah, I can remember that, we will get that changed, thank you. Any other? Any other comments, do we agree there a quick record with the change being made? All agreed, thank you. We move on to the planning application, the first one is the Eton City of Norwich School. We saw on page five to page twenty and we ask our planner to take us through the report, Daniel, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Okay, so I'm here to present an application at Eton City of Norwich School. The application is to vary the condition eight of previously approved permission nineteen zero one zero zero two F to allow an increased hours of use of the tennis court. And this is a red line of the plan, what I would like to clarify is the area we are considering the hours of, the changed hours of use for is the area here with the tennis and netball courts and not the hard standing play area underneath. And so there's just some pictures of the school from, of the courts from various sides, this is from the northeast corner looking towards the dwellings on Lowther Road. And here we've got a picture of the lights following remedial works. So during assessment of the application, we became aware that the lights had been installed taller than was originally previously approved under the original application. Discussions were had with the agent and they made the choice to lower the height of the lights. We have been out to visit and we are now satisfied that they have been installed as approved under the previous application nineteen zero one zero zero two F. And for context, here is an image of the court, so as I said, the area being considered is the blue area with the sports courts here and not the hard standing. This area is floodlit, the hard standing is not. And then you have residential dwellings to the south of the site here on Lowther Road and to the west here on Wellsford Road. And for clarity, this is an area against the hard standing which separates the hard standing court from the boundary of the residents on Lowther Road. This chain link fence here and surrounding the courts is not proposed to be removed and that will remain in place. And I'll leave it. Leave it there. So the proposal is to extend existing opening hours on Monday to Friday, they are currently approved until seven PM. The proposal is to extend those until eight thirty PM. On Saturday, they're currently approved from nine AM till one PM and the proposal is to extend those hours until five PM. There's currently no operation on Sunday and no restriction on bank holiday hours. The proposed opening hours are to include opening hours from nine till twelve on Sunday and specify that they shall only be used from nine till twelve on bank holidays. Sorry, I'll start again. During the course of the application, we received objections regarding amenity impacts from the lights and from noise. General disturbance from use of the courts. Concerns regarding the use of the principle of the development and the location of the courts, I would like to make it clear that the courts being cited where they are and the positioning is not a consideration of this application, that has been established under the previous approval and we are here to assess the impact of the extended hours only. Since publication of the report, I'm sorry, there was also concerns raised regarding the use on bank holidays, which was previously discussed in the previous application. Restriction of use on bank holiday had been omitted from the condition restricting the hours, so the proposed hours of use would allow us to bring that use on bank holidays back under control. Since publication of the report, there have been some additional representations received which you can see in the updates report. Those were sent, I think, directly to members and included several grounds for refusal. From an objector. The first of those was non-compliance with the Human Rights Act, that is discussed, covered in paragraph forty-three of the committee report. And we have responded to that in the updates. With regards to the principle of development and the use of the site, we are satisfied that the courts as they are being used and the general use of the site remains F1, which is for educational purposes and we don't believe that there is a need for a change of use at this time. The use of the courts outside of school hours would remain ancillary to the primary function of the site as a school. The concerns were also raised regarding travel to the site and the extended hours encouraging more car use. There's no substantial evidence to support that theory. And yeah, we've responded to that in the updates report. The next one was, and concerns regarding ecological impact in terms of updated guidance regarding bats. That is covered in the main, the main report which was published, but also in the updates, we have considered updated reports. The main one which we think the objector was referring to is the favorable conservation status of barista bats. We've also considered the updated C I E M guidance for bat mitigation. And we don't conclude that there's any reason for the impact of the extended hours to change the findings of the original reports. With regards to the use under compliance with policy DN twenty-two, that's also been covered in the main report and responded to in the updates. Once again, we are confident that the extended hours and the use is compliant with those, with planning policies. And there was also concern regarding the noise. We have since publication of the report changed the wording of the recommended condition seven to require further details of acoustic screening. Details have been specified in the application documents, but to ensure that the proposed screening meets the attenuation levels they've suggested and can be controlled, we've amended the wording to require further, further details to include materials composition and attenuation achieved. The proposed location of that acoustic fencing is as shown by the green light, green line here. That would be attached to the existing chain link fencing on the south here and that gate would have to remain closed. That gate is only used by the school during certain hours of the day and doesn't remain open for general use after the school is closed. And the further updates were also received following publication of the report. I think the main thing we've taken from those is, I would just like to reiterate that we are considering the extension of hours only and not the principle of whether the courts should be used outside of school hours. Everything else has been responded to in terms of noise and lighting. Also, just for the avoidance of doubt, there was several references made in objections to ILE guidance and the use of cows. We have taken the position that the ILP guidance is guidance. And the original approval does not require compliance with that guidance in terms of the use of cows, that has been discussed with the school. And that they aren't proposed to be installed as part of this proposal.
Okay, thank you for that. We've got a few speakers on this and the first one we're going to call is Raymond Clark. If you wish to come up to the table. Sorry, I'm having a speaking. You have to touch the red button, yeah. If you wish to sit down, it's up to you, but you're allowed three minutes.
Okay, I think I might not need that, I think my voices can be heard at the end of the table.
I think you need to speak into that because it's been broadcast live on YouTube, I see, I'm afraid, sorry for that.
I thought I had to comment because my wife and I live on Wellsford Road in one of the houses closest to the school tennis and hard surface courts. In fact, our garden fence is just yards away from number five tennis court. Currently, when the courts are in use, we can hear quite clearly almost every bounce, every hit and every word spoken on the courts. And we are very relieved when seven o'clock in the evening on weekdays and one o'clock on Saturday afternoon comes and we can relax and read our books, enjoy conversation with friends or listen to the birds without the noise from the tennis. Tennis is not a quiet sport. We know that from listening to tennis being played or coached on the courts during school hours. We accepted it when we moved to our home three years ago, but at that time there was no tennis out of school hours. I would like to suggest that the noise from five tennis courts in full use with the possibility of up to twenty people playing at the same time, plus the added voices of players, coaches, umpires and supporters would be truly tolerable. Approving this application would mean tennis could be played next to our house and neighbouring properties until late evening every weekday of the year. I believe it has been suggested that a wooden fence two metres high could be placed between tennis and hardball courts and our homes. That's quite unrealistic and would do very little, if anything, to deaden the noise. I have to point out that if either of our next door neighbours started having noisy parties or gatherings in the evenings in their garden, we would perhaps shrug it off if it just happened one or two evenings. But if the noise continued for more than a few days, we would be very annoyed and would certainly have something to say. One of our next door neighbours is the City of Norwich School. But if the application is approved, we will have very little success in complaining to them about the noise. The school would no doubt respond to complaints by reminding us that they have approval to do it. CNS is in effect saying to us and other nearby residents close to the court that we must put up with it and just look forward to our Sunday afternoons to enjoy a bit of peace and quiet in our garden. Why is it so necessary to extend the hours and further increase the noise disturbance to local residents? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Our next speaker is Keith Pilport and I'm allowing you ten minutes because you're speaking for other residents in the area.
Good morning Chair.
Thank you.
Members of the committee, fellow residents and community members. My name is Keith and I stand before you today as a representative of the twenty households who live through the upset caused by the CNS tennis facility. On behalf of these residents who range from a few months old to the over eighties, we wish to express our collective objections to this application. Whilst we recognise the desire for increased recreational opportunities, it is imperative to consider the legal rights of neighbours and the years of inappropriate use that have been aired regarding this facility. Most notably concerned surrounding noise, light pollution, privacy intrusions and the impact of floodlighting. In doing so, let us also not forget that this facility received its original planning consent during the pandemic, leaving us, the concerned residents, without any platform to voice our grievances. It is this lack of voice that has allowed mistakes to be made during the initial application. These have been to the detriment of neighbours. Ambiguity, details missing off the condition notice and a lack of checks combined with a belligerent and unresponsive school leadership team means that as a community we have lost faith. But also recognise that mistakes do get made and that we must play our part in sharing the truth. So whilst we are grateful to the planning officers for making the significant amendments to the original documents, we wish to highlight today that there remain weaknesses to this proposal and the narrative is skewed. So let's go through the proposal as presented to you. The reason we are here today is simply because the school received grant funding on the back of an agreement that it would be able to open the tennis facility until ten PM, seven days a week. This agreement was made before the initial planning, first planning permission and has not been changed since. So regardless of today, we fully anticipate being back here again until the school achieves the ten PM closing time it has been pressing from the outset. So in this context, you can see why today is so important as it sets a precedent for the future. You will also understand why we have been seeking clarity on the exact position of the extended hours as ambiguity during the original application meant that enforcement activities on the adjacent hard standing area, issues with parking and poor management were not able to be enforced as two different council departments had different interpretations of the information recorded. You will also understand why we wanted clarity around how the original condition notice meant that bank holidays were not recorded correctly. Bizarrely, this application seeks to correct this mistake by granting access on bank holidays rather than committing to the previous decision that bank holidays should be preserved as quiet time. But no, the narrative context is one that infers that correcting the mistake is doing the neighbours a favour, really? So the essence here is that mistakes were made and as, as we will outline in our case, have been made again. We raise, we raise these not to point blame, but to seek the balance, the perspective that information you are provided is not completely reliable. The most notable, notable point surrounds the presentation of Article One of the Human Rights Act. The essence of this article is that people are legally entitled to the peaceful enjoyment of their possessions. This is an absolute right and this right must be preserved. It is simply wrong for officials to say that proportionality is relevant consideration within Article One. We acknowledge the original opening hours needed to balance the public interest in sport against the right of neighbours. This is a correct use of Article One. However, the argument of proportionality is irrelevant to any future case as the facility is already open and hours deemed acceptable via the initial planning process. Our legal advice gives the council notice that is making a mistake by even considering this application as materially it should have been rejected on the basis of Article One. Failure to do so means the council will be in breach of this act and liable to recourse. We encourage you to fully consider Article One today before reaching your conclusion. As, as neighbours, we accepted the outcome of the original planning decision, as should the school. As it recognised that closing at seven PM and giving us rest bike between Saturday afternoon and Monday and on bank holidays was fair and compliant with the wider public interest. We say, see no legal case for this to change. So let's talk about noise, paragraph thirteen to fifteen surround the noise, the issue of noise. As neighbours, we've been asking the school to install acoustic fencing for the last four years. The school have refused as the original noise assessment stated that neighbours would not suffer from noise. And because the council did not mandate it, they would not do it. Forgive our frustration over the value of these professional studies that in one moment say that no fencing was needed and then four years later agree that fencing would mitigate the noise. So let's look at the acoustic assessment. The assessment was done in one day during the daytime in June last year. The total time taken to reach its conclusions was thirty minutes, twenty minutes on netball, ten minutes on tennis. So from thirty minutes of daytime data, the conclusion is reached that acoustic fencing is needed. Fine, but at this point it jumps to the height, the location and construction without offering what the assessment is seeking to redress. So let's take the height. Wider information on this subject describes how the height of an acoustic fence needs to be higher than the noise source. Now I am tall, but when I raise my arms to either serve at tennis or defend and attack in netball, contact points are over two metres. So unless we're going to ban people over five foot seven playing tennis, then the proposed height of the tennis court is not fit for purpose. The planning officer report also makes the point that the neighbouring properties are on higher ground than the school, hence the name Eton Rise. But also states that this is immaterial. I'm afraid that these facts are material when assessing noise as the height of the activity, the higher ground of the neighbours, the height of the border fencing and the wider noise from the school all contribute to the ease to which noise travels. These points are completely missing from the acoustic assessment or again is this deliberate? The assessment also gives us the recommendation, recommended location for the fence, but does not tell us why. Again, there is lots of wider information on this subject and best practice states that to be effective, acoustic fencing should be placed as close to the source of the noise as possible. In this case, it would be around the tennis courts. But no, for some unknown reason and without any evidence in the assessment, a conclusion is reached to place the fencing around the hard standing area some fifteen metres away. We believe the acoustic assessment is weak, does not withstand scrutiny and was formed to tick a box only. It also shows a bias towards the client's wider goals without offering realistic evidence to support its conclusions. If the outcome was to propose a fence at the stated location, then to be relevant, the acoustic sample should have considered data from both the tennis courts and the adjacent hard standing area. But thanks to a pupil who decided to sing via amplified system on the day of testing, we know that all this data was excluded. If only noise from the school could be so easily switched off. So the report conclusions around noise decimals is completely flawed. The time of day is flawed, the height level is flawed and the location route of the fence adds to the problem rather than preventing it. As a mixed residential area, noise intrusion at any time has an impact on our wellbeing. But after seven PM will affect young families seeking to put their children to bed and upsets the elderly and vulnerable neighbours who for so long have lived with absolute silence after the school days, days ends. Therefore, we ask you to reject any change to the opening hours unless, until a more robust acoustic assessment has been done or when the school has been proactive and built a fence so that proper noises can be tested. If not, you are just merely taking a speculative punt on the specification supplied and its impact. So come on, the school have had four years to address the noise and done nothing. So let them act before seeking to change hours. So let's talk about lights. Your pack shows the intrusion around lighting, how we were assured that flood lighting would meet the institution of lighting engineers ILE specifications and how errors by the school and a lack of interest by the council resulted in four years of illegal activity before someone agreed with us that flood lighting was installed incorrectly. So forgive us again if we lack the faith in these so-called professional studies. Again, forgive us if we don't have faith in the, in the quote in paragraph thirty-five surrounding the design of these lights not needing cowling. We are in no doubt the lights are built in accordance with ILE specification, but not its wider purpose. The ILE guidance is a bit like the highway code. You have to understand the rationale behind its existence to understand its motivations. The highway code does not set laws, it shares the etiquette of safe driving within these laws. The same applies to the ILE guidance around dark skies and light intrusion. To help you understand the difference, let's take you on an imaginary walk to the sports facility that borders here at school on Hall Road. Hopefully some of you know this site. This facility also have floodlights that are ILE compliant, like CNS lights, they are designed not to have cowling. And if I were able to pick you up and imagine you standing on the roadside outside this facility, you like me would say the lighting in this area is reasonable. If I did the same at the CNS site, you like everyone else would say that they are not built to the same specification, but they are. So what is different? It's the amount of surrounding light or darkness of the area. The ILL guidance recognises that it cannot prescribe the location where flood lighting will be used, so it has come up with a specification that in most settings is reasonable and uses technology to mitigate. However, the whole purpose of the guidance is to reduce intrusion and the impact of dark skies. And therefore urges installers to do everything possible to fulfil these aims, including cowling. The installation of cowling would reduce the level of light intrusion and reduce the dark skies. It is not good enough to say that it meets the ILE specification and does not need cowling when the guidance itself is not so prescriptive. Instead, reliance has been placed on the installer's assessment, which promotes that cowling is not needed. Not an independent assessment of ILE compliance and certainly not a school seeking to do all it can to preserve dark skies and restrict intrusion. So after four years, the tennis lights have, the tennis facility lights have only been legally compliant for ten weeks. There has been no There has been no further lighting assessment to assess whether any further action towards the goals of the ILE compliance would make a difference. And ultimately, we argue that the installation of cowling is such a low cost mitigation step that there is a duty on the school just to get on and do it and demonstrate that it's done everything that it can possibly can. We feel that you can give a rejection reason that facility has not been legally compliant for sufficient period to justify the extended hours. So in conclusion, today is only half time the school's quest to open this facility seven days a week. We know that we will be back here again in the future. We have shared, shared that to uphold our rights, greater consideration of Article One needs to be considered and how proportionality is not legally correct. We have shared how the documents used to give assurance over the noise and lighting are not worth the paper they are written on and these are just designed to support a narrative other parties wish you to hear. We have shown that when placed under scrutiny, they fall apart. Finally, we have shared with you the arguments over lighting cows that are cheap and minimal step that you have to ask yourself why this has not just been done. We ask you to require the school to be proactive, to install the proper fencing, to fit cowling to the lights and preserve our rights to enjoy our possessions before looking at the openly operating hours. By rejecting this application, you will send this message. It is time for those in power to listen to the voices of its people and to do the right thing, to see through the motives, to see through the gaps in the reports and to see through the future pathway that today's decision will lead to. The principles of democratic society rely on us all doing the right thing at the right time by seeking to unify communities rather than divide them. Show us that you understand these values by rejecting this application.
Okay, thank you. You actually got twelve minutes there. I'll let you carry on for the next two minutes and I'll cut you off. If we've got two more speakers, Councillor James Wright. And you have three minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I'm here to speak. And to talk about the significant strength or feeling in the community, as you've already heard. I want to talk briefly about lighting, a potential mitigation and the amenity for local residents and concern about the applicant acting in the best interests of residents. It's telling that it took a significant campaign from local residents for enforcement investigation to be brought to ensure the original scheme was installed per permission. Your report states, an enforcement investigation has taken place under reference two-two dash slash zero zero seven zero slash ENF, which found that the lights have been breached at the previous approval due to their height in August twenty twenty four. The masks were lowered in February twenty twenty five and the lights are now installed as previously approved. Now, this seems to be at odds with a statement from the school in the Norwich Evening News article published this morning. A spokesman for the school said, as soon as the trust was made aware that the columns for the lights were mistakenly installed at the wrong height, they acted immediately to have this corrected and the structure is fully in line with planning permission. It begs the question, why would enforcement action have been necessary if the school had acted immediately? In an argument against cows used in paragraph thirty-five of your report, it states, the lighting specification actually states on page six, the LEDs provide a crisp, subtle light controlled via the internal LED louver unlike any other product on the market without bespoke cows seen in older metal halide technology. This feels less like a specification and more like marketing materials and I would urge the committee to apply an appropriate level of cynicism to this statement. To conclude, the installation of cowling seems entirely reasonable and I urge the committee to condition this. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Councillor Labic next. Thank you. And you have three minutes as well, Judith.
I particularly wanted to speak today to represent the objectors to this application, to try to tell the other side of the story. For you, the committee, to appreciate that the local residents are already experiencing the loss of their amenity with noise intrusion throughout each school day and into the evenings and weekend and with light spillage into their gardens and homes during the dark evenings. All this doc, in this document, there are thirty-four letters of objections received to this application. The officers have summarised these in the report. However, that doesn't give the full picture as the residents see it. The current hours of operation have resulted in floodlights shining into the gardens and homes that would had once, to quote the report, "a quiet suburban character." Lights are switched on even when the courts are not used. There is intrusive incessant noise from players, shouts and whistles from unsupervised youngsters, strong language sometimes. When problems arise, which is lights remaining on after the allotted time as happens when changes are made from winter to summertime, when players overstay the allotted time, when there are other problems, there is no one point of contact to report this to. A contact where the issue is dealt with quickly and a response back to the complainant given. So residents quickly at the moment lose faith in the school's ability to manage the system according to the current times of use and fear what will happen with extended hours. This application is asking for an increase in hours of operation. An extra seventeen hours of use, including extensions to the evenings and Saturdays and inclusions of Sundays and bank holidays when currently Sundays and bank holidays are closed. Having this one day a week without any noise or, or light intrusion gives the residents a chance to once again enjoy their amenity as before. At least one opportunity to arrange a family get together with no, in the garden with no disturbance. I ask that as a committee, you are a reason, you are reasonable and try, try to address the needs of the residents alongside the needs of the school. And if there were just one day, that being Sundays, left free, I think that would be a reasonable balance. Another reasonable approach would be to accept that in practice there is light spillage into the garden and homes and to place a condition that baffles are fitted to the lights. A common solution when this happens in street lighting and residents complain. Paul Donacki, who is unable to be here today and lives close to the site, has supported those with some, those some twenty residents directly affected by light spillage. He was a senior lighting manager at the county council before his recent retirement. He suggests a simple, cheap and effective mitigation that would massively help residents. And that is to fit baffles to the flood. I think to make it a condition of the approval would again offer a small acknowledgement of the amount of intrusion this application will have on the lives of people. I would also ask that you introduce the management of the site condition, a single point of contact. I would ask that by restricting Sunday use, placing baffles on the lights and a single point of contact, the balance in favour of the school's needs over the residents will have been tipped more fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one more speaker and it's Chris Evans, who's going to speak in support of the application. You're alone six minutes, but since one or two other people have gone over, you'll be an extra couple of minutes if you need it. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Give you one second. So my name is Chris Evans. I'm the founder of and director of the National Tennis Association and I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant in support of the officer's recommendation to grant planning permission subject to recommended conditions. NTA is proud. Sorry, do you want me to go back? Fine. Playing tennis offers numerous health and social related benefits including improved cardiovascular health, social interaction opportunities and mental benefits in terms of stress relief and cognitive function. We're delighted that the use of these tennis courts has become increasingly popular with the local community. It is because of that that the school is understandably wanting to respond to this increased demand from the local community and seeking an extension of the currently limited opening hours. At present, adults are particularly restricted in their ability to make any use of the facility at all due to the closing times of the facility all year round. With the courts currently closing at seven and a typical game of tennis lasting between one and a half and two hours, this severely limits any opportunity for any adult participation at all. Extending the hours would help address this issue and enable more adults to benefit from regular tennis activity. At the same time, the school is wanting to respond to increasing demand for netball in the local community. The school have sought to be reasonable in their request for extending opening hours in recognition of the concerns raised by neighbours about the extended use of these sports facilities and potential impact on their amenity and quality of life in terms of noise and light. Such concerns to me are understandable and not uncommon in applications of this nature. Hence, the school has openly engaged with the residents on these concerns and was a direct result of these discussions. It was agreed a reduction of opening hours originally applied for by thirty minutes Monday to Friday and two hours at the weekend. In terms of the noise impact, at the very onset of the project, the school engaged the services of a specialist noise consultant with considerable expertise in these matters to undertake all the necessary technical assessment in this respect. The assessment was informed by background noise surveys undertaken over four full days during the summer last term. These surveys determined that the proposed extended use of the tennis and netball courts would be likely to generate noise in the nearest gardens below the level at which a noise disturbance would occur according to industry standards. Notwithstanding this, and as a gesture of goodwill, the school has agreed to install a two metre high acoustic fence along the eastern edge of the tennis court, insert by one or two metres from the adjoining boundary to afford residents further protection in this respect. This requirement would be skewed under condition. In terms of lighting, the school has actively responded to the concerns that were raised about the alleged non-alignment of the installed lighting columns with the original approved plans. Those columns have now been replaced to ensure full conformity in this respect. This also extends to the level of luminance which the council's environmental protection team has accepted as being aligned with the approved lighting plan and assessment. This means there would be no significant light spill beyond the confines of the tennis courts. It is important to note there is no technical evidence disputing these accepted findings and so it follows there would be no demonstrably unacceptable impact arising to neighbours' amenity in such terms. The school has willingly agreed to a condition requiring a revised management plan to be approved by the council outlining measures that would be adopted to regulate and control the use of floodlights. This would include a light meter programme to turn the lights on only when the level of daylight falls below a certain level and it would turn off automatically in accordance to the approved hours of use. There would also be a manual override and please consider that floodlights are only really in use between October and Easter. As a result, the school is taking every reasonable and proportionate step to ensure it remains a good neighbour within local community. For us as NTA, we're really excited by the opportunity to expand the use of facilities and respond to the increased demand from the local community. The application proposal would have a significant effect in responding to this need and demand and in absence of, and in absence of any unacceptable harm. It is considered that planning permission may be appropriately granted in such terms, in my view.
Thank you very much for that. Can I ask the panelists today, we should come back with anything you just said, Daniel or David?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think that there's a number of issues being raised, obviously some of which are covered in the report, some of which, but all of which are covered in the documentation, but I think some require elaboration on. Some of those are procedural and I'll deal with those first. But Mr Philpot, in his address, referred to how we have dealt with the issue of the Human Rights Act. And he, he, he said that the issue of proportionality, as I understood it, he said it was, it was irrelevant. I, but we disagree with that. We think that that is actually a key principle of the, the Article One of the Human Rights Act. And that's reflected in our assessment in paragraph forty-three. It's also, so there's obviously different interpretations of this because that, that the issue of proportionality is also referred to in one of the documents that was sent by objectors to yourselves directly, where the objector, can you remember his name? Jonathan Hall states that officers have overlooked a key principle of the Human Rights Act nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-eight rather, the right to peaceful enjoyment of property must be proportionate. And, and the argument presented there is that the impact is not proportionate. We've taken a different view that the, the, the impact caused by the proposal to extend the existing hours does result in some impact upon the ability to enjoy possessions which extends to people's homes. But is, is still commensurate with the Human Rights Act. So that's, that's a procedural issue. Our advice to you as your officers is that you can, if you are minded to, make a decision that will be compliant with the Human Rights Act today, if you so wished, in approving it. Obviously, you may choose to make another decision. The other point is that, as Danny has already alluded to, we are just looking at the application before you, which is a variation of condition application to extend the hours. Mr Philpot referred to the school, to, to the school's long term aims, which he says are to seek opening till 10pm and suggested that you need to send a message to the school that that's not appropriate. You don't, you, you, that's not a reason for refusing this planning application. You must look at the impact of this particular proposal and not what the school might do. If they want to do that, then there would have to be another application and you would have the ability to determine the impact of that. You need to limit yourself in your consideration of this proposal before you today to the impacts of the extension of the hours. I also want to come back to the points about the lighting that has belatedly been installed in accordance with the approved plans. There's no re- When the, the application was approved under the twenty nineteen reference, the, the, the lighting scheme that was submitted was assessed under the Institution of Lighting Professionals guidelines. And it was deemed at that point in time that it complied with those guidelines. Now, that's an assessment that the, the objectors obviously disagree with, but that was the assessment at the time. And the conditions attached to the twenty nineteen reference application specify what was approved. So to my mind, from a planning point of view, there's no issue about the, the lighting that was approved. And the, because it was specified on a plan, there were, there were drawings submitted with the application. It showed the type of lighting units that should be fitted. It showed the height and position of the columns. That's the scheme that was approved. There is, from a planning point of view, no issue about the specification of what was approved. So if there's a different interpretation of the Institution of Lighting Professionals guidelines, as I say, they are guidelines, obviously people can interpret them differently. But our assessment in twenty nineteen was that the lighting as approved complied with the guidelines. And as installed is compliant, sorry, as now installed. Yes, it was installed incorrectly. So the school made a mistake. I'm not going to comment on what the school said. There's the, but it was installed incorrectly. The only point I would make on that is that enforcement action doesn't necessarily mean the, the service of a notice. We didn't serve a notice on the school. They, they complied eventually with the, through negotiation with the scheme that was actually approved. So we didn't need to serve an enforcement notice. Just one point on the, on the fence which was made by the speaker from the Tennis Association. The, the, the acoustic fence isn't a gesture of goodwill. The acoustic fence is required to mitigate the impact of the development. That's why it's a condition of this application. It's not a gesture of goodwill. Any other points, Danny?
I'll just add to that, that the location of the fencing has been considered within the report, within the recommendations of the acoustic report. But there is a reason for it being located against the hard standing here and not between the hard standing and the tennis courts. And that's because in terms of the school, it would present a safeguarding issue because it would block a line of sight. from teachers controlling kids using both courts at the same time. So they need that to remain open, an open line of sight.
Thank you very much. We move on to questions from members now. I have got one myself. I don't know if you have any information or not. Well, what is the percentage of the courts used by outside bodies or members of the community? And do they come from the community or do they come from Great Yarmouth or somewhere?
We, we don't have any information as to where people come from. I mean, I think once you actually start getting into asking where, where, what's the definition of community? Is it the tennis community?
I just wondered how long, when did the school stop using the courts? Do they stop at half past three when the schools shut or, or do they go on till eight o'clock when the courts shut?
The school have access to the courts for when they would need them. So if it's for after-school clubs or then they would have access to the, to the courses, as is my understanding.
We, we don't have specific information as to what proportion of the time after-school closing hours is used by the school and what is used by the people booking through the Tennis Association.
Thank you. councillor Harbour.
I've got, I've got two questions on the, on a similar theme, if you'll permit me, Chair. I just wondered whether the school has made any representation about how it intends to maintain good relations with its neighbours with these new operating hours? And whether the school has indicated how many complaints it's received about the operation of the tennis courts?
So that information has not been supplied as part of the application. In terms of maintaining relations, we've sort of acknowledged, so the part of the original scheme management plan was conditioned and approved. It's obvious that the, that's not sort of working so well with the residents, which is part of the reason we are looking to. We've conditioned a new management plan that would need to set out a point of contact for, to, for residents to report antisocial behaviours. That's in the wording of the condition, as well as other things. But yeah, the management and control of antisocial behaviour. There is also the point that really, that's with regards to the school, but there is also sort of extreme antisocial behaviour or things should also be reported accordingly to the council where appropriate.
Thank you. councillor Davies?
Thanks. Could I just come back to the lighting? So in the twenty nineteen original reference for the lighting, the lighting was not installed correctly at the time. When was it first reported to the council or the school that it wasn't correctly installed? And I just wondered why it's, why it's taken so many four years, I think somebody said, to, to get to compliant?
I can't, I can't answer the question about when it was reported to the school, but only when it was reported to us. And our enforcement case was opened in twenty twenty-two. And it has taken, I mean, yeah, the school could have acted quicker in, in response to the issues that we raised with them. But eventually, they, they've done what they should have done in the first place.
Yeah.
If I just wondered if I could just come back on that. If, for example, the acoustic fencing isn't installed correctly, will residents have to wait three years for it, for the school to respond if, if the same thing happens with lighting?
I think that's going so.
I, I, I think, yeah, there's, there's, there's two, there's, there's whether or not it's acceptable to approve the, the acoustic fencing. Because you, you, you've got to, you've got to, and I know this is hard sometimes when you're, when you're looking at the behaviour of an applicant, but you have to kind of disentangle the behaviour of an applicant from the principles of the, of the land use. And if it's appropriate to condition something to mitigate the, the, the use or, or the, or the development, it should be that that guides you rather than any past behaviour of the, of, of, of the applicant. So, but I mean, I, I, I would hope that they don't. And that, that, that compliance with this, with this particular condition is, is, is better than with the lighting one, but that, that shouldn't play into your determination of this particular application.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, did councillor Davies have a point? Was it related to? Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's just a follow-up to, to this. So I wonder when we come to the discussion and conditioning, I wonder if we could add a condition that if there are complaints received about, you know, the planning permission not being followed as per the conditions, we could set a timeline for that to be done. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. With regard to parking, I think it's fair to say that issues relating to parking and the school are fairly notorious in the, in the, the area. And I'm just keen to understand what assess, I'm just keen to understand a bit more about and the assessment that there will be no material changes as a result of these, the extension of, of, of the operating hours. Because what happens at the moment, as with, with many schools, that, you know, kind of pick-up and drop-offs happen in, happen in, in waves. And for some reason, you know, CNS seems to have a particular challenge with promoting active travel, if I can put it like that. So I'm just keen to understand how, you know, kind of promote, how potentially pickups going on late into the evening aren't, you know, are going to be managed. And I, I, you know, I accept the point about having to disentangle past behaviours, but I think, you know, it feels to me like a, something that I don't have enough information on at the moment to be able to feel confident in approving this.
So again, the parking was assessed and the parking arrangements were part of the management scheme that was previously approved and would be part of that again. In our assessment, the, the parking arrangements aren't changing. There is available a fair amount of available parking on-site and no need for people using the courts to, like, there's travel routes through the site to the courts. So there's no, like, for instance, that gate on Wellsford Road is not open. So there shouldn't be a need for people to park there to use their gates, like, to use the courts for the purpose of using the courts, I should say.
Sorry, can, can I come, just, just add to that? Again, you, you, I can come back to the point that you're looking at the impact of weekdays, an extra an hour and a half in, in, in the evening. If you refuse this particular application or, for whatever reason, then the, it, it, the, the parking issue will remain for that period up until seven in the evening. So we're just looking at the impact of, of that additional hour and a half in terms of car parking. And, and because the number of courts isn't changed, isn't changing, the impact upon car parking doesn't increase, it simply move, it simply happens for longer. So if, bearing in mind that there's, there's a, there's a capacity on the school site that, that, that that applies to the existing hours of use, that capacity is still available to the additional hour and a half.
Yeah, I just follow up on, on, on that. Presumably though, we're not, we're not suggesting that people using those courts are going, are going to remain the same. So that they're, you know, people are going to play, the same people are going to play tennis for an extra hour.
Question, or is it?
No, yeah, it is, it is a question. So, so won't there be an impact from new people arriving? Because there will be, you know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that the same people will, will be playing at seven and then they'll simply stay for an extra hour and a half. But what I'm saying is that, I don't know, that there'll be a mixture of those people who are, some, some of those people who are currently playing will stay a bit longer. So there's no impact from them. But if somebody stops playing and then another person arrives, that's still not an increase in, 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 in the, in the parking numbers required on-site. There's still a finite number of people who can play on those courts.
Councillor Sands, mug Sands first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm interested in the question of the acoustic fencing. The ideal situation, of course, is to have the acoustic fenced in as close to the source of sound as possible, in which case two metres might be of sufficient height. I take on board the comments that to put the acoustic fencing there would create blind spot for school management. But how was two metres arrived at as a height for the school fencing? I mean, I've drawn a couple of little diagrams for myself here, and I would have thought that perhaps moving it further away, a height of probably two point five or even two point eight metres in height for the acoustic fencing would be more appropriate, given the way the noise travels and the way the noise can refract around the top of the fencing.
Sorry, I'll just bring up the report so that I have not misquoting anything. So in the, in the noise assessment submitted May, dated May twenty twenty-four, the acoustician who did the report has noted that the school proposed a two-metre-high noise barrier shown in the proposed location. And concluded that the screening would result in a seven-to-eight decibel reduction, which would be at the nearest receptors, which would be well below the requirements. So does that answer your question?
I mean, in, in answer to the question, the, the, the height is, is, has been assessed as appropriate by the acoust- noise surveyor who, who carried out the assessment, which has been reviewed by our environmental protection team.
Yes.
I, the noise surveyor certainly is a highly professional sort of a person. But looking at the sort of physics of the way sound travels in, in waves and the effects of refraction, I repeat, you know, with the acoustic fence up close to the source of the sound, I can see that two metres in height would be quite appropriate. But moving it further away, and the way that noise can, it's, it's not like light that travels in straight lines. It's actually curves and refracts around objects. I would have thought that perhaps the sound engineer would have found placing the fence further away would necessitate an increase in, in height to have the same effect as putting it up close to the fences. I would have thought something like in the region of two point five or possibly even two point eight metres would be more appropriate.
The, the only response that I've got to that is that, that is, that, that is what the, 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 the surveyor concluded as, as appropriate mitigation.
Councillor Sands, Sue?
Mine's a straightforward question. The applicant says that the floodlights will only be on from October to April, which, working on my fingers, equates to seven months, which is a considerable part of the year in my estimation. And councillor Davies makes an extremely good point about past behaviour. If we're going to do anything about the floodlights, how can we be sure? I know you're going to give me the same answer, but so, you know, how can we be sure they're going to sort out? Seven months of the year to have floodlights on seems an awfully long time to me. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Haines? No, sorry. Yes, yep.
I just wondered if you could also comment on the point that was made by one of the resident speakers about the height of the fence again, and the fact that some hits or, yeah, maybe above that two metre. And also voices, I guess, as well, shouts could be certainly around the, yeah, the height of the, the fence.
Thank you, Councillor Young.
I'm sorry, my, my, my response to that is exactly the same as my response to councillor Sands. I mean, the, the, the height has been proposed by a suitably qualified person, has been assessed by environmental protection as being capable of providing, subject to the right specification, the required noise attenuation.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to discussion now, but before that, I have to move the recommendation, and the recommendation is to approve. And I move that, we've got second for that. Thank you, councillor Sands. Move on to the discussion now. I'd just like to say, something to start with. I think I'm going to vote against the recommendation in the end, only because to keep, I, I know what balls are banging on there, and it's bang, 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 bang. And they should have a day off on a Sunday, and they bank holidays, they should have time. And going into the evening, I figure I'm making worse, the, the fencing they want to put around there, I don't think it's high enough for it to go around. So I need a recommendation or something to come from some members to the right words, so I can support something like that. But that's my, what I want to do. Councillor Harbour first?
Yeah, Chair. I am not minded to support the recommendation, I'm afraid. And, but I'm very happy to come up with, you know, kind of a-
Thank you. We still haven't got a recommendation yet. Councillor Sands, Monica?
Yes, I will come up with a recommendation. At the moment, the proposal gives local residents absolutely no respite throughout the year. I would imagine, I can't see many people playing tennis on Christmas Day, but we're, we're talking about potentially three hundred and sixty-four days of the year. So, and I, I think the hours are excessive. I also think the fence quite simply isn't high enough. So I'd like to propose an amendment to the hours. I'd like to see Sundays and bank holidays remain closed, give residents respite. I'd like to see the, yeah, I can see a slight extension of hours, but I'd like to see that to, rather than to eight-thirty, I'd like to see it to, I've got written down here seven-thirty, but I'm willing to compromise and propose at eight o'clock ending time for tennis in the evenings. And on Saturdays, nine A M. to two P M., rather than nine A M. to five P M. I'd also like to propose that the acoustic fencing be increased in height to two point five metres.
Yep.
Sorry, Chair, just to, just to clarify from a procedural perspective. So yourself, you proposed that we accept the officer recommendation before, was that what you did at the?
Yeah, we have to do that to start with, then it's up to the members that are- Yeah, we have to do that to start with, then it's up to the members and us to discuss it. And we'll have to go against the recommendation and then set out
Okay, I'm, I'm afraid I'm-
That's what we've been told legally, we have to do.
Okay, well, if you've got the proposal on the table for the officer recommendation, you can amend it. Um, as it is, so as councillor Sands has said, is amending what the officer recommendation is, is currently is to approve with the additional conditions, as you've set out. If you want to reject it, you'll have to remove your proposal to approve. And then, okay, so if you're going to do that, if you do that now, and then we'll need a proposal for refusal. But as it currently stands-
There's two proposals on the table.
You can only have one proposal on the table at a time. So just to be clear, the current one that I have noticed before us is that-
It's mine and his ended.
Yep.
You now got his proposal and I need a second for that. And then I take my proposal away. Bit complicated. We've got a new committee secretary who comes from a different council, which worked different to what we did.
Why we could have proposals written up on the screen so that committee and the, um, visitors are clear exactly what's being proposed? I don't know if that's possible, but I think it'd be really, really helpful.
I wouldn't fault it.
Thank you.
I wouldn't fault it. That's something you need to take up somewhere else, I would have thought, yeah.
If I may, Chair, um, that is something that we can look into afterwards. But what, what I would usually do is I'd read out the whole proposal and any amendments before members go to the vote, so that you would, and if there is any clarifications, that would be the point that we could do.
Maybe that's something to take up outside, because I just think we've got so many people watching and they may not necessarily know what our processes are. And I think, yeah, it'd be really helpful to have it really clearly displayed, but we can pick that up another time.
Okay, this?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry for the clarification on that. So as I have it then, obviously you've proposed it, we've gotten amendment from the vice chair. So the substantive motion on the table is to approve, um, subject to, with the amendments of that councillor Sands has read out. So that is the substantive motion on the table currently.
Yes. Have we got a second for that? Uh, Karen, you second it?
I'll second councillor Sands' amendments.
Yep. Thank you. Councillor Harper?
I would like to, um, see the screening of the, the lights included in, in that amendment.
Okay, screening the lights in favour as well, thank you. Uh, second is for that, yes, thank you.
Moving quite fast. What, what, what was, what was your amendment, councillor Davis, please?
I was seconding councillor Sands' it.
Sorry, I thought somebody said-
And then there was about the lights, councillor Harper said the lights.
Yeah, the shrouding of the lights. Can I, can I ask a question about, um, possible further amendments? Because I may have others.
Well, you can, but they all need to go in into this. I mean, if we've got loads and loads of amendments, it seems like to me that we should be voting against the whole thing.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'd be very happy to do that too, um, in all honesty. Um, you know, and I, 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 I'm, I'm not clear on whether the motion, um, to accept, um, does need to be moved, but-
David, any of us? No, it's okay. Well, but-
We reiterate, reiterate the amendment perhaps with inclusion of shrouding for the lights.
Okay, so.
I mean, sorry, I've, I've got quite, is it worth me asking my question about the other, um, the other, uh, things I'm concerned about, that I would like to see conditioned?
Yes.
Um, okay, so I am concerned about, I don't know how easy it is to condition this, but I am concerned about the, um, the relationships that, um, the applicant is fostering with the community. And I, you know, I, I would like to see some proactive engagement to avoid some of the issues that have rightly been raised, that have occurred in the past. Um, I don't know if we can, if we can condition that. I don't know if we can just give a strong recommendation to the applicant that they might want to work with the community to avoid some of the problems we've seen, we've seen, um, you know, kind of previously. I'd also like to see, um, some form of condition on, on active travel, because I have, um, real concerns about, um, you know, the, the, um, the way that the applicant doesn't, has failed, in my view, to promote active travel to the site. And I appreciate that that's wider than this application. And it might not be something that we can condition, but I do think it's an issue that deserves, um, addressing.
Okay, councillor Davis?
Thank you. I think as part of the management plan, I think we should, um, condition if there are any, um, you know, enforcement issues that need to be taken up, that the school, um, has to reply and, um, and restore the correct, uh, planning conditions within a certain amount of time.
Uh, I'm not sure if we can do that. David?
Before I come back on individual points, other, with your position, Chair, are there any other suggestions that members feel they might want to make? Okay, um, in, in reverse order, we, we, we can't condition that breaches are dealt within, within a certain time. That's another, we can, um, we, we, we can't. That's, that's a separate, the planning enforcement process is a separate process from the consent that we grant. Um, the, I've, I've said it several times and members are probably going to be sick of me saying this, but if, if you grant consent, um, sorry, the application is only about extending the hours. So if you extend the hours from seven till eight, anything that you put on this condition can only apply to that extension. One hour. Because they can, you, you're not getting rid of their, uh, uh, a variation of condition application does not get rid of their existing consent. They will still be able to, um, they, they will still be able to, um, do, um, sorry, I'm not making myself very clear. They, they will still be able to rely on their existing condition. It, it, it doesn't supersede it. So any condition that you attach must be proportionate to the increase. So you, in, 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 in order to meet the tests of necessity and reasonableness. So the slightly perverse issue is if you reduce the, if you reduce the increase in hours, you're actually reducing the impact, which you may decide is what you actually need to do. Um, but if you think, but, but then if you're trying to put additional conditions on and actually make their ability to operate within an additional hour on, um, on an evening, um, the, 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 the conditions that they have, the, the, the things that they have to do in order to be able to do that, there has to be proportionate to that increase.
Okay.
So it might-
Be better to vote against.
It might be better to simply refuse the application.
Well, we've got a recommendation on there. The recommendation is to approve it. And we've got a few amendments which have been proposed and seconded as well. We will go to the vote now and if we- Go on.
Thank you, Chair. So just to clear up a very slight procedural matter. So with the amendment that councillor Davis made, is that accepted? But because yourself and councillor Sands are the proposers, is that accepted by yourselves?
Well, yeah, they were accepted.
And councillor Sands? Thank you. So that now becomes the substantive motion that members, that is on the table.
Okay, and if we go around the table-
Sorry, before you vote, Chair, what are you voting on? Because, um, I know, I, 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 there was councillor Sands made his suggestion about amending the hours. So it's closed on Sundays and bank holidays, opens until eight on weekdays and Saturdays nine till two. And then he mentioned the two and a half metre high, um, acoustic fence. Then councillor Harper said, um, about, um, a shrouding on the lights.
Yep.
And then, um, that, uh, and councillor Harper also mentioned, um, fostering relationships, which the, the only way that you can do that is through the imposition of a management plan. Um, you can't, because what, I mean, I don't know, um, if you, if you attach a condition saying you shall foster good relationships, what does that mean? It lacks, it lacks precision and doesn't meet the tests. Um, the act-
I feel stuff we need to take up definitely is to residents and local members.
But this, this kind of comes back to my point, Chair, about what we're, what we're actually now voting on with, with the amendment. And then, um, it was also mentioned about active travel.
Oh, that's not in there.
Okay, but this is just what I heard. Um-
You got that in there?
Well, um, okay, right, we're not talking about active travel. Okay.
Yeah, there was no second or nothing like that, so I didn't go in.
Okay.
I didn't make a-
This would be quite easy if we proposed this, then we all vote against it. So that means that a whole lot fails.
Yeah, I mean, because I was under the impression we could only make a decision based, but, you know, and that's not saying I don't have sympathy for the points people are trying to make here, but I was under the impression we needed to hook it to actual planning grounds or it could really easily be overturned on appeal.
Yeah, can I also make another point on that?
Not need to do that.
In that you've, you've, again, the amendment actually reduces the impact. And you are supposed to, if you think conditions can reduce the impact and make it acceptable, then fine. That you, 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 you can, you can do that. But what you shouldn't do, but, but, but any additional conditions that you might want to put on need to be proportionate to the impact. So councillor Sands, your recommendation has reduced the impact of the proposals. Loading other conditions onto that, you are eroding, um, and, and, and the committee is potentially minded to refuse that. So you, we're, we're now in a position where the committee would be voting on an, on an application which actually has less impact than the current proposed, than, than the application that's on, as proposed.
That's the case then. Uh, I'll withdraw my amendment and propose that we reject the application.
So we're now back to the original proposal, which was to approve. That's been proposed and been seconded and we go to the vote on that now. And we go round in order.
If councillor Sands has withdrawn his motion, the motion falls, we don't have a vote on the table for anything. And thereby this floor is clear if anyone wants to make-
Now, the amendments, oh, the whole lot has fallen in one go.
If you withdraw, that is, you have taken it off the table.
Okay, fine. David, are you happy with that? Well, that's what I thought. So I would like, I think we, I think we should go through this, what we got in the papers and vote on that or against it. And then, and we've got reasons why we're going to vote against it, noise, lighting, noise, impact. This is quite a lot. Okay.
Chair.
Yes, councillor Calvert.
Procedure, procedurally, um, my understanding is that we need to put a motion to reject and then vote for that procedure to reject and give grounds. Or if, if so minded, put a proposal to accept and grounds and vote on that.
Yep.
And that's, that's the two options as far as I understand them, with support of-
Councillor Harper.
Um, can I move that we reject this?
Thank you. We've got a second for that? Yes, two or three people. Okay, any discussion?
Uh, can I have planning reasons, please, Chair?
Reasons. I mean, reasons is noise, which will be into the evening. And the noise measures which they're going to put forward, they're good enough. Councillor Harper?
Um, noise, lights, um, and, um, the inadequacy of the management plan to deal with residents' concerns.
No, they, they, okay, the reason for refusal has to revolve around the extended hours. So the, um, reason for refusal would need to be something along the lines of that the proposed extension of opening hour, of, of, at the hours of operation of the tennis courts would have an adverse impact upon the amenity of nearby residents by virtue of increased, but, um, increased exposure to, um, noise, um, and light-
Yep.
Pollution. Yep. And then we can come up with policies, the DM twenty, DM two and possibly DM twenty-two come to mind.
Do we need to come up with something about keeping the shut on a Sunday and bank holidays?
No, because, um, you, you, I mean, this, this is the other thing that you need to, that, that, what the decision that you're making now will not address the existing issues. They will continue to operate under the conditions of the, of the existing consent. And that's all.
Yep.
Okay. So no cowls on the lights, no acoustic fence. So, yeah.
Um, and thank you for that, David. I, I'm concerned that we might do better to accept and condition it, because then we can put the conditions in that we're looking for. If, if members are minded to have higher fences or they're conditioned for, want to put conditions on cowling on lights, um, they're better to accept, uh, the proposal and condition it appropriately. Um, rejecting it outright means that residents, we then aren't controlling bank holidays, we then don't have noise mitigation, um, we don't have cowling on lights. So I'm, I'm concerned that we, we might prevent later opening, but we don't take any of the advantages that residents are looking for in terms of those mitigations.
We do because Sundays would be stopped, bank holidays would be stopped. Well, I sit closer on a Sunday at the moment.
Yeah, um, so just to really-
How can I open on a Sunday if we say no?
Bank holidays tend to be weekdays, so, um, a bank holiday, so currently, so the current wording of the condition allows for use on whatever hour, whatever hours on the day the bank, the bank holiday falls.
Okay, so do we need to shut down tennis courts completely? Yeah, I know we can't.
Pardon me.
It seems like there's obstacles being put in all over the place and the thing got to finish here. Councillor Harper?
Um, I mean, I take councillor Calvert's point, um, but I think, I mean, I, my expectation, and it's difficult without the applicant here, but my expectation would be that they will want to, um, come back, um, you know, for, for, um, with this application. And, you know, I think our advice, um, to them should be that if they, um, make the mitigations that we've been discussing and that residents are clearly asking for, um, then, you know, they might, they might have a different outcome if they came to, uh, if they submitted a new application, having preemptively done those things or, um, agreed to do those things.
Uh, can I comment, can I comment on that, please? Um, I, okay, my previous comments were about the, the amendment that had been put on the table, which was reducing the impact of the proposal. You have another option, which is along the lines of what councillor Calvert has, has suggested, is you can accept the additional opening hours, but with increased, um, but, but with better mitigation if you think that the impact of those existing opening hours warrant it. So if you think the impact of those existing, of those extended, sorry, those extended opening hours, um, would without more, without further mitigation, um, be unacceptable. So you, you might come to the conclusion that the extended opening hours are only acceptable if you have a lighting scheme that's got cowls on, if you have a two and a half metre high, um, acoustic fence. But the problem with the previous, um, recommendation was that, as I said, you were reducing the impact of the development. So the argument in favour of getting tighter controls reduced. So you do have another option, which is you can, you, you can come to the conclusion that effectively the officer report underestimates the impact of the increased hours and it warrants further, um, it warrants, um, a, 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 additional mitigation, which as I say, might take the, the form of cowls on the lights or some such, you'd need to allow a bit of flexibility on that, because there's more than one way to skin a cat. Um, and, and you, and you also might conclude that the, the, the noise mitigation is, um, is, is in the form of the fence is unacceptable. So you might want to up, up those conditions. Or you can simply conclude that on the basis of the evidence in front of you, the, the, and the proposed mitigation put forward by the school, that the whole thing is unacceptable. But I do need to make the point that it will continue to be used as it is up until seven in each evening. So I just don't want you to be under any illusion that refusing the application is necessarily going to make things better for the residents.
Councillor Sands.
It comes back down to the simple fact that we should simply refuse the application. And if the applicants wish to sort of make further future applications based upon the lengthy discussions we've had here this morning, then they can come back to us at some future date. So I propose that we simply refuse, go to the vote and refuse the application.
Okay, Calvert, you happy?
Could I read out the wording, Chair, as we have for the refusal? Just so that everyone is clear and I can check with David with regards to wording as well. So I have it that that the application be refused as the proposed extension would have an adverse impact on residents due to increased exposure to light and sound, and that would reference policy DM2.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a vote on this. We'll go round the town as it's got to be registered. I will vote in favour of the recommendation which has been proposed. Yeah, recommendation to refuse, yeah.
I also vote in favour of the recommendation to refuse.
Calvert, agree with the recommendation to refuse.
Councillor Davis.
In favour of the recommendation to refuse.
Councillor Haines.
I'll vote in favour, thanks.
Councillor Harbour.
In favour of the recommendation to refuse.
Against.
Paul.
I vote in favour of the recommendation to refuse.
And I vote in favour of the recommendation to refuse.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you. I say members in favour of refusal and one in favour of the recommendation. Thank you, that concludes the first one that has been lost. It's a. We've got about 20 minutes, we've got to stop soon. Yes.
Something to eat and then the observance and then commit Southlands, which is essentially give you a break.
You're disgusted.
It's a good idea. Because otherwise we're going to have to have a subsequent break for food or something to eat anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Hi, Leoni, could you please get the live stream going again, please?
Yeah, we're live.
Okay, thank you everyone for waiting. We're now starting the planning committee again. And we go on to our second application, which is on page 21 to 96, I believe. And it's 10 Barnard Yard. And if I ask our planner to go through the agenda, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So item two is an application for the construction of a Class E food store with associated access car parking, servicing and landscaping at 10 Barnard Road. Just for clarification to start with, Class E is a planning use class, which is the commercial business and service use class, which is quite a broad use class, which includes retail, which is proposed here, and it also includes leisure uses. So location plan showing the red line of the application site. The address is Barnard Road, so Barnard Road is at the south of the site, where the point of access is taken from. This site currently has a bowling facility on it, which is the large sort of rectangular building that you can see on the application site. And there's a frontage there with the Deirham Road to the north. As you see, there's an area to the south of the site that isn't part of the red line of the application. It functions as the existing car park for the bowling facility. Doesn't form part of this planning application. It is in the same ownership as the applicant, but it isn't under consideration at this today. You can also see on the, to the east is the existing hotel and to the west are existing industrial units on the Bothorp employment area. Just a bit further out for context, we've got an aerial photograph here. So the building with the white rectangle where my cursor is, if you can see, is the existing bowling facility. You can see to the, to the south is Barnard Road, which is the main, well, which is the access into the industrial area. You can see the industrial units around of a variety of sizes. Hotel site that I pointed out earlier. And there's also a pub restaurant further to the east. To the north is the Deirham Road and you can see greenery and trees along the Deirham Road frontage. You've got housing in Cossie to the north, which is in South Norfolk District. And then to the south, just off the edge of the plan or just on the edge of the plan there, are the areas within the Norwich City Council administrative area. They're Bothorp, Three Score and Chapel Break. And there's reference within your report to highway improvements or improvements that have been carried out by Norfolk County Council within the last year or so on the Deirham Road. And a mobility hub, which is in sort of this location further to the east of the Wendy and Roundabout. So a wider block plan here that was put in as part of the planning application. It shows there's a vehicular access in from the Barnard Road to the south. That's using an existing vehicular access that serves both the hotel and the bowling facility. It will have some improvements made to it to improve pedestrian and cycle access. To the north, there's a pedestrian and cycle access ramp proposed from Deirham Road to overcome a levels difference between Deirham Road and the application site of around two and a half metres. There is the proposed food store to the west of the site. There's a pedestrian and cycle path proposed along the eastern site boundary to connect Deirham Road and Barnard Road. And an area of car parking around the proposed food store to the, to the north and east of the proposed new building. Zooming in a little bit further in more detail, you can see the, like I say, the store is to the west of the site, which has its entrance on this north east corner as a overhanging canopy where you've got cycle parking beneath it and trolley storage. Wrapped around to the north and east is car parking, 102 car parking spaces. 10% of those will be electric vehicle charging spaces. Like I say, 42 cycle spaces underneath the, underneath the canopy there. So here's the elevations of the building that is proposed to be constructed. It's a typical food store design, a metal and glass clad building with a monopitch roof and solar panels will be installed on that roof. As you see, it's a building that is designed for little to occupy. The floor plan for the building, again, fairly typical of a discount food retailer, large extent, open sales area. You've got this canopy here that includes, covers your cycle storage and your trolleys. And then at the southern end is a service ramp, which is, aids deliveries. It's a recessed ramp that helps to attenuate noise and prevent disturbance. A section through the site, it's a bit of a zoomed out section of the site, but this bottom one in particular shows you've got the Deirham Road on the right hand side of the drawing. And you see it drops down an embankment to the, to the application site at a lower level and then sort of levels out towards Barnard Road. You probably just pick up the dashed outline there of the existing bowling facility. So the proposed food store building is lower and it's less bulky in its extent of coverage of the site. Onto a few photographs, here's one from, towards the Barnard Road frontage. So that's the existing access road into the site. You can see the bowling facility there in the background. So the application site is sort of roughly from where that building is and backwards, not this area in the foreground here, which is the car parking area. This is a view of the north side of the existing building, sort of the back of the building. Uninspirational really. I'm stood here taking this photograph on the top of the bank on Deirham Road, which is probably more evident from within the site. So that's a view on my left. You can just about see a car passing on the Deirham Road and then we drop down the embankment sort of in the two tiers. There are some trees on that embankment. And then it, and the application site will cut into that embankment and involve the removal of some of those trees. And that's a view directly towards those trees. And there's reference within the report to removal of four TPO oak trees and that's that cluster there. This is on the Deirham Road itself and you can just see the bowling centre in the background there. This isn't the crossing, it hasn't already been installed. This is a bus gate, which is now operational, that was installed as part of those improvements that the Norfolk County Council have installed. And the intention is that the crossing that is referred to in the report would be installed in conjunction with this bus gate approximately in that area. What that one's in there for, we seem to have an older version of it. Didn't have that. Those two, yeah. Okay, yeah. Onto, as you see, there's been a number of objections to the application. They, a lot of those objections are from residents and users of the existing bowling facility from both within Norwich and within the wider Norfolk area. And they're summarised within your report from page 26. And the issues that they're relating, relate to the loss of a valued facility, particularly for league and tournament bowlers, feeling that other facilities in Norwich don't provide these facilities. And it's clearly a valued place for people to meet and socialise. Also, within the updates report, you see that there was three further letters of representation that were received, two from people that had already made comment and one new, raising similar comments, reiterating impacts on the loss of the bowling facility. And there being no need for a supermarket in this location. In addition to the objections, there were three objections that were received from other retailers. Those were Aldi, Waitrose and very late in the day, Roy's. And they're on page 29 of your report. They raise issues related to the applicant's retail assessment, the sustainability, sorry, the suitability of the location and the impact on existing stores that are operated by these retailers and the centres in which they're located. If you move on to issues that have been covered in the report, a full assessment obviously is contained within the officer report. And I'll just briefly summarise some of the main ones for you. So firstly, we've got a proposed retail town centre use. Is, is, sorry, a retail town centre use has been proposed in an employment centre. So it's in an employment area, it's an out of centre location. So proposals for main town centre uses on employment areas are dealt with by a policy in our local plan, DM16. And it seeks to prioritise areas, employment areas for employment uses and other economic development uses. But it does permit main town centre uses such as this, except as an exception, where you meet a number of criteria. So those are, you, that a sequential and impact assessment is carried out and it's satisfactorily demonstrated that it's not practical to accommodate the development in a more sequentially preferable or accessible site. And that the use is appropriate to the character and function of the employment area or it's an ancillary use to an already existing use on the site. So on the sequential and impact assessment, we brought in, we brought in some expert advice on this from an independent retail consultant, both to advise us on the applicant's submission and to advise us on the representations that have been made by those other three retailers. And we did go back to the consultant on a number of occasions and had meetings to discuss the points that have been raised. Both of these assessments, both the sequential and the impact assessment, considered the impacts on designated centres. So those are centres that are designated for retail purposes within a 10 minute drive time. So that captures a few smaller centres around Irland, one at the UEA, a small area in Cossie, which I'm not actually certain whether it is a designated centre. But also the Larkman District Centre and the Bothorp Main District Centre. Sequentially, it was concluded that there were no suitable sites that were available in any of these designated retail centres or in another out of centre location, which is more accessible than this. And that was agreed with the input of our, like I say, the retail consultant that was advising us. In terms of the impact assessment, we looked at the same centres and came to focus more on the Larkman District Centre and the Bothorp Main Centre. With, there was a great degree of questioning around turnover of business, of the sort of anchor stores there, trade distribution. And to ensure that we'd had the proper understanding of the impacts on the centres and could understand the concerns that were raised by those other retailers and ensure that they were addressed. So the result of the impact assessment, so at the Larkman District Centre, Aldi was considered to be trading well. So it's trading at almost double company average levels. It's been subject to significant investment over the last year or so through a store refit there, showing confidence in continued operation there. And the cumulative impacts on the Aldi at the Larkman, although not insignificant at over 21% trading impact. It's a store that's overtrading. And the assessment suggests it would continue to trade well even with these impacts. And it's considered there would be no materially adverse impact on the health and viability, vitality, sorry, of the store and consequently of that centre. And that's a test that the MPPF looks to us to as satisfying. At the Bothorp Centre, where you've got Roy's, it was slightly more tricky in that information on turnover for Roy's isn't publicly available like it is some other supermarkets. And there was some late input, like I suggest, from a representative on behalf of Roy's. And they've configured, sorry, they've confirmed that their turnover figures are lower than is estimated in the applicant's retail assessment, but they're not prepared to release those figures for confidentiality and competition reasons. And they are seen to be trading considerably below their benchmark turnover. So whereas Aldi are overtrading, Roy's are undertrading relative to their company average levels. It's been trading at this level below industry benchmark for some time. And also, it's known that the company, Roy's, does own the whole of the Bothorp Centre. And benefits from rental income from the units that are operating there and the businesses that are within it. And it's also, its trading performance goes beyond what we call the convenience goods sales, so your everyday items. They do sell a proportion of comparison goods items, you know. a proportion of comparison goods items, you know, your garden centre, your bulkier items, which will contribute towards their sales. And also, it's got a well established customer base. They had, the report suggested that there would be a six point seven percent trading impact on Roy's. And they, and this reflects the fact that the new Lidl would proportionally be more likely to compete on a like for like basis with another discounters such as Aldi. And that's reflected in the twenty one percent impact on the Aldi store. So for the Bothorp Main Centre, it contains a range of other uses there. There's a health centre, there's a public house. And this, along with the other retailers, smaller retailers and other businesses in the centre, will help to contribute to the overall performance of that centre. So a small reduction in customers visiting Roy's annually may occur. The centre would remain the focus of a range of other trips. People are not just going to Roy's. There are there are other things there that would be drawing people to it. So consequently, on balance, it's not considered that the impact on this centre would be significantly adverse, again, that MPPF test. So as a result, we consider that both the sequential and the impact test for retail purposes are passed. And in this location, on the very edge of the employment area and adjacent to a hotel and other commercial users. And it's not a use that would be inappropriate to the character and the function of this part of the of the area. Just to add to that, and it's mentioned in the report, there's a position of a fallback position that the applicant has sort of wished to state. Basically, this is the fact that, as you know, we're looking at a classy use here. Both the proposed retail use and the existing leisure use fall within the same use class. It didn't used to be the case, but a few years ago, the use classes order was broadened quite significantly. And so within that existing building that stands there, a supermarket or a retailer could go in and operate from that site without needing any planning permission. As just a straight swap change of use. That's obviously not what we consider in here specifically. We were dealing with a new store. But the fact that that is a fallback position is important because it's a material consideration that will affect the way that we apply to our retail policies in particular. So we mentioned the existing use. So there's an existing use there, which is considered to be a community facility. So it's a premises for indoor sport and leisure. It's a, like I said, a valued bowling centre. A local plan policy DM twenty two sets out that the loss of community facilities must be justified. You need to consider if the use is viable, practical to retain, whether there are any realistic alternative community uses that could use the site in the building. The applicant isn't isn't the tenant that is operating the business that's running from there at the moment, the bowling centre. And there's been some confidentiality and sensitivities around having a tenant business continuing to trade from the site and not looking to affect that continued trading. It's been suggested by the applicant that there isn't a long term viable future for a bowling facility at the site. And some information compiled and submitted by the applicant by a local agent has looked at the attractiveness and the feasibility of the site being used for alternative leisure uses. It highlights that this would be quite a significant amount of investment required for other users to take on this, the building. And the rental return and lease length, et cetera, is an, it results in a suggestion that it wouldn't be viable to invest in the modifications required to the building for another, an alternative community or a leisure type use. And moving on to a couple of other matters, one being transport and sustainable access improvements. I was hoping that we had a map about this, but this seems to, this seems to have been a bit of confusion with the presentation, unfortunately. And so I'll try and explain to you sort of in a, in word form, if that helps. And we've had discussions with the Highway Authority to secure appropriate improvements to access for pedestrians and cyclists to the site. So that includes a provision of a new crossing, as I mentioned previously, to the Dearham Road. And that's a two can crossing. So two being cyclists and pedestrians. And it will significantly improve access from the north. And that will, like I say, tie in with those Dearham Road improvements that have already taken place, allow greater much improved access to public transport corridor there and the mobility hub that's been recently been provided on the Dearham Road. And that together will join up with the provision, sorry, of a continuous pedestrian cycle path along the eastern boundary of the site that will sort of bring you down through the site and then connect into Barnard Road. To the south, we asked the applicant to look at what could be achieved to improve access for residents of Bothorp. So we've got the residents of Cotty to the north covered better than they, much better than they are at the moment. So look to the south. So they went away and did a review of the highway boundary information. But it was found that there, there's not there's not the ability to provide continuous provision along Barnard Road. There's a sort of sixty metre plus length of missing footway and it's a grass verge and that isn't public highway. So what you would end up doing is having to eat into the carriageway on Barnard Road, which is at the minute is seven and a half metres wide. And because you need, there's required widths to do with, you know, it's an industrial estate employment area, you've got large vehicles coming in there as well. Then that would compromise, you know, the operation of the industrial estate. So they looked at other taking these constraints into consideration, looked at other ways of improving access by cyclists and pedestrians. And basically, it's a combination of improvements to crossing facilities across existing side roads on the industrial estate. So where you've got there's no lowered curbs and tactile crossings to cross over those side roads at the moment. So even though there's footway provision, you need better ability to cross. There's a provision of a new zebra crossing to get you across Barnard Road to join in with footway provision on the south side. And in some improvements, there is a Mayfly Way that comes up, a pedestrian cycle path that comes up from Bothorp, which is further to the west of the application site. It's considered that cyclists could come from Bothorp, up Mayfly Way, up to Dearham Road and then in from the northern part of the site if they didn't want to cycle on the short section of carriageway of Barnard Road. Coming further from the east, you know, you've got on carriageway provision. And there's also, like I say, in terms of the pedestrian improvements, you have got also improvement that is off this map that I can't show you unfortunately, but there is a pedestrian path, a formal pedestrian path that takes you down further into Bothorp. And there's things like there's an inappropriate place lighting column right in the middle of a central island and, you know, they'll move that and put in some lowered tactile curb crossings as well. So it's improvements within the extent of highway ownership and that doesn't involve third party land that they don't have control over. And there's been no objection from the Highway Authority. And they actually support the delivery of the two can crossing on Dearham Road in particular because they see this, this crossing demand is currently evident. There is a trod path across the across the verge there. So people are making, even with the bowling centre operating, they are attempting to cross in that location. So the two can crossing on the Dearham Road will be a significant improvement. And just finally, on the matters of layout, design and landscaping, it's, I must say, it's a fairly typical sort of layout in this type of use. But it isn't unacceptable to that extent. It does, the proposals do involve the loss of some trees. In particular, to accommodate the pedestrian cycle ramp. So the four oak trees that I mentioned and the photographs earlier are in the area of the cycle, pedestrian cycle access ramp. And that has been sort of squashed up and reduced as much as it can be. You have to have certain gradients that you, you know, it can't be too steep. And it's been positioned such that it's trying to avoid the trees as best it can. And there's a couple of other, you know, other trees are being lost in the sort of north east corner there as well. In total, nine trees are proposed to be removed. And sixteen replacements are proposed to try and replace or to ensure that there's a continuous frontage of trees and vegetation along the Dearham Road. And also to provide some trees along the southern boundary there to provide separation between that and the vacant site to the south. And we, the officers consider that the benefits associated with provision of that ramp to aid access to the site and the crossing of the Dearham Road is sufficient justification for the losses of those trees. And the landscaping includes a mix of trees, shrubs and grasses and delivers a net biodiversity gain. And can be delivered through planning conditions, which will include some biodiversity species enhancements as well. So just to conclude, the conclusion of the officer assessment is that although acknowledging the loss of the bowling facility is regrettable and appreciating the resultant negative impacts on health and wellbeing, the loss of the community facility has been justified. And the proposed retail use in an outer centre location has passed the sequential and impact tests. So the proposed retail use in the location can be accepted. The package of offsite highway works will greatly improve accessibility to the site by pedestrians and cyclists. And will also help to deliver wider accessibility improvements through providing access through the site from Dearham Road to the industrial state and Bothorp to the south and crossing to Dearham and Barnard Road. This will deliver a sustainable form of development that is much better connected with surrounding residential areas than exists at the moment. The landscaping and replacement tree planting can be secured through planning conditions. So the result is an unbalanced officer recommendation to approve the application subject to the conditions outlined on pages sixty and sixty one of your report.
Thank you, Sarah. Long report. We move on, we've got one speaker is speaking against John Greengrass, Seehair.
We've checked chair downstairs as well, he doesn't appear to have turned up to the meeting.
Okay, in that case, the applicant don't get to speak either.
And we do, well, we do have a statement that's been submitted that will then allow the applicant to speak. So we have the statement.
We've got one from
From a local resident who has written in and couldn't be here today, but has asked for a statement to be read out.
Okay, brilliant, yeah.
Which I will do. It does, the statement does contain some photographs, so I will. It's a, well, I don't have.
Yes, well.
Chair, usually with if it was a written statement, because every other public speaker wouldn't be able to hand around copies of photographs, we wouldn't usually include photographs as panning around to members. So as it's public speaking as opposed to presentations.
So the the member of the public introduces themselves as Ahad Maharajan, saying they're a Bothorp resident. I have had little time to look into the application in depth. I apologise if any points I raise have already been addressed. Has a shop on top of a car park approach been investigated? And then there's a photograph of an Ikea development showing a shop above a car park on the outskirts of Sheffield. And in relation to this photograph, the member of the public says the main shop is built on top of the car park and allows for a significantly more efficient use of land. Lifts and escalators allow for accessible access to the shop. If a more efficient design was used, would it be possible for both Namco and Lidl to exist on the same site? So that's a question. As this is a shop, has sufficient access for more sustainable methods to reach the shop been fully considered? Cargo bikes, i.e. non standard bikes frequently with large dimensions, can offer an excellent alternative to driving for a weekly shop. But this is only the case when planned for. Have proper considerations been made for access from both sides, especially Bothorp? I also wonder if a section one oh six can be made here to improve to improve the pedestrian and cycle provision from Bothorp. As the junction between the Wendy and Cloverhill Road is extremely dangerous for pedestrians and cyclists alike, there are no proper signals for either group who are likely to want access to the shop. Are pedestrians and cyclists just expected to literally guess with their lives as to if it is safe to cross? And then there's a photograph of the junction. A modern roundabout with parallel crossings would certainly improve the provision. The current route for many in Bothorp is rather indirect. This could be improved by a new pedestrian and cycle friendly junction and cycle track along the Wendy. Then there is, and then there's a photograph of an existing pedestrian crossing across Wendy Road, where those on foot stroke bike looking to access the new shop must contend with heavy and high speed motor traffic joining and coming off of the roundabout. This must be improved for pedestrians and cyclists with some parallel crossings. If there is space available for a dual carriageway with a median, then there is space available, which is shown in the photograph. Then there is space available for improving pedestrian and cycle provision following LTN one stroke twenty. It's local transport note. Another parallel crossing has to be considered when crossing Barnard Road into the new development from the route described to improve provision for cycling and walking, especially as there is already one of the road on the improved Mayfly Way. There's then reference to the, there also seems to be a raised crossing stroke drop curve missing on Barnard Road. A separated cycle and pedestrian crossing on Dearham Road would be better. I am likely to be significantly younger, that's the person making the representation, than others taking part in this application. The cost of driving for a young person can be prohibitive, thirty five pound per hour for lessons and high insurance and vehicle costs. Many others may be excluded, the elderly, children, those taking medication and suffering from some illnesses from getting the full benefit of a new Lidl by virtue of not being able to drive. Please ensure that routes for non motorised users are safe, direct and coherent if approved.
Okay, thank you, David, for that. Now we have got the applicant or the applicant's representative, Gordon Gascogne, I believe, thank you. And you have three minutes as well. Thank you.
That's on, Chair.
Yep, brilliant, thank you. Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to questions, I believe. Council Susan.
My understanding of pedestrian crossings is minimal. Could you explain to me exactly what a toucan crossing is?
Yeah, it's, it allows pedestrians, it has, my understanding, David, you might be better on this. It has two sets of lights. It has lights for pedestrians and lights for cyclists. So it allows both to cross with light provision for them.
Yeah, it, it also has kind of additional width on the crossing itself. So there's a lane effectively for cyclists and pedestrians. So you can cycle up to the crossing. There's a button that'll allow a cyclist to call it as well whilst not interfering with pedestrians. And then on the other side, there's a, a button that'll allow pedestrians to call it. So there's a degree of segregation that you wouldn't get with a Norman, with a normal pelican crossing.
So just sorry, through you, Chair. So, okay, so if I come up to the Toucan Crossing, for instance, I can press the button and stop the traffic. So it's not a case of the traffic will can flow. It's a case of if I press the button, then the traffic will stop. Is this correct? And, and that's just in front of where the buses, the buses are going to be. Because you've got the bus hall, bus gate, did I, did I, sorry, did I read that correctly? It's straight in front of the bus gate.
It, it would be incorporated with the lights for the bus gate. So while this was all being put together by the applicant, the county council were in the process of, well, were carrying out the works, I think. So they had, the applicant's highways consultants were in direct contact with the county council to see how a crossing here could be incorporated with the works that were being carried out. So it doesn't conflict with it. It can work alongside it. Yeah, so it combines the lights that are there, there'll be some modification to the, you know, what's on the ground and the lighting. But it can work in conjunction with how that bus gate operates. It won't conflict with it.
I've got a second one, Chair, with your permission. Could we have up on the screen the picture of the roundabout at Wendy, please? The map. That is a picture, but that's not the one I want. The one you had up before.
That's the one.
That one, okay. Obviously, I use this roundabout, well, for the moment. But obviously, I, you know, use this roundabout more than a daily basis. Now, I can tell you, in spite of what Norfolk County Council Transport might say, that roundabout is extremely busy, extremely busy. I've had a couple of near misses myself and there's been a couple of accidents there. Okay, I have got a question, Chair. My question is, given, has there been any report taken about the amount of traffic that is then going to go off down Barnard Road? Because as you know, it's an industrial area and it's already got heavy lorries coming up and down there. And that's going to be in increased traffic because the traffic that currently goes to Namco is fairly light. My question is, have you taken into consideration the fact that you're going, they want to put a pelican crossing across the, where the bus, what are we calling it now, bus gate? There's also one further down and another one further down and another set of lights. Now, when the traffic comes up to that roundabout, have you taken into consideration that it is going to back up down Wendy, back up down Deere Road? They've already had a year and a half of disruption down there. Was that taken into consideration?
Yeah, the applicant, the application was supported by a, for a transport assessment. So as part of that, there was, it included traffic surveys. It looked at how traffic is operating in the area, including around the roundabout, you know, at peak times.
Did they do it at midnight or something?
No, they, they did it in accordance with how these types of assessments are carried out. You know, it looked at what the peak flows were. Obviously recognised that this is an industrial estate. It, like I say, had further look at what was, because it was while the bus, while the Deere Road works were being installed, so they weren't operational. And it also has to look at wider things like what is, what's committed in the wider area, residential development at Threescore moving forward. So it's done all the stuff that would be required of an assessment of the highway impacts. And it considered that, I'm just looking for the report here, that, you know, the material impact on the local highway network, there wouldn't be a material impact on the highway network operating performance. People are, I think the trips are spread out, it's not necessarily at peak times of the day that you're going. You know, the traffic's already on the net, on the network.
Really busy traffic, yes.
But it's already there on the highway network as it is. And like I say, those peak times, people shop sort of throughout the day. So it's not necessarily during the peak times of the day.
Okay, thank you. I've just got one question, which is, mine's a different subject. It's about the trees at the back, which they're going to take some down. Is there any way they can take my home and put them somewhere else?
The existing trees.
Because I've seen it done on film. I mean, these oak trees, I mean, if that was a sycamore, I would just say chop it down, I would personally, but these are English oak. I mean, these are British trees, if you know what I mean.
But yeah, I think they could, they're described as early mature oak trees. So I think they're about 30 years old, which is, would have been put in, and, and it is a, at the moment, it provides, it doesn't provide a gap, but it provides less mature vegetation than perhaps is along other parts of the, that. We, we, they did look, because the scheme did involve the removal of more trees to start with. And it was explained that that wouldn't be acceptable. So they did have looked and modified the design of the ramp as much as they can to prevent the removal of so many trees. I must admit, they haven't been specifically asked to, I know what you mean, you can get these big tree spades that lift trees out.
Yeah.
But, you know, you need to, I need to take advice on whether these are suitable species and size and stuff to, that to be a feasible option. I don't know the answer to that.
Actually said it only 30 years old. I thought they might be able to do it. So instead of being 108 years or whatever. Council Davies?
Thanks. I just wanted to come back on the oak trees. So it says the oak trees are 30 years old. They, they don't start producing acorns till about 40 years old generally. So there will, I think there will be quite a big loss of biodiversity. Because if you're replacing with other trees, that oak trees perhaps, that are going to then take 40 years to start producing acorns. I, I don't think that can be mitigated with kind of, you know, lesser, lesser quality, younger trees necessarily.
Yeah, in, yeah, in the, in the short term, yes, there's, there's going to be a loss. Because any replacement planting, it takes time to establish and come to fruition. And that, you know, the, the replacement planting, replacement tree planting as part of a wider landscaping scheme for the site. You know, we, we're trying to get appropriate species and amounts of, it's a balance between the number of replacement trees that are proposed, given the layout and getting some appropriate species. At the moment, it's proposed that they're all replacement oaks. And our landscape architects have suggested we might want to get a bit more variety and species in there. Because relying on a single species is perhaps a little bit not so resilient for pests and, you know, in terms of climate change moving forward as well. So that is some, there is a recommended sort of detailed, full detailed landscaping condition that will help us to bottom some of these matters out further.
Thank you. This relates to the cycling and walking accessibility of the site. We, our officers wrote, our officers wrote to the applicant about a year ago to say the site is poorly related to adjoining residential areas with limited accessibilities to public transport routes for both staff and customers, an extremely limited opportunity for linked trips other than, other than from the workplace within the employment area. Housing in Chapel Break, Cloverhill and Threescore, all part of Beaufort, is located to the south. The area has been, has some footpath cycle provision from the employment area by separated from Chapel Break, separated by Chapel Break Road, which although it has a footway provision, is not actively overlooked and only allows the opportunities to cross in specific places. The proposed use is clearly intended for private car users and its location does little to reduce dependency on the private car as it's not currently related to the surrounding areas. And then it goes on to say that this is contrary to policies DM1 and DM28. I can see that the accessibility has been addressed from the north across Deere Road. I'm wondering how such serious concerns have been overcome by accessibility of walking and cycling to the south. I'm sorry, just, it's a long question. I appreciate, Chair. I just want to say that the, the person who wrote in that statement is absolutely right. So the junction of Wendy and Chapel Break has no pedestrian crossing facilities despite being a dual carriageway. And the same is true at the roundabout as well. There's a lot of, a lot of people make the crossing, I've made the crossing myself, which involves crossing a dual carriageway at the arm of the junction. These, none of these are easy and accessible cycling and walking routes at the moment. What, how have we overcome these concerns that you raised earlier?
Yeah, sorry, councillor Calvert, I, I did have a plan that tried to demonstrate this, which I didn't save by the looks of it. But this, so this aerial is the best I've got. It, like I say, it's not large scale with the, with the exception of the crossing of Deere Road. The rest, it's not significant continuous pieces of infrastructure. It's through those provision of improvements of crossing points within the industrial estate. Specific to Wendy and Roundabout, I was under the impression, I think you're encouraged at the moment to cross away from the roundabout. I think from the information I have, how people would cross, say they're coming from the Deere Road direction. I think the crossing point is a little bit further down. It's not a formal, formalized crossing. I don't know if there's a central island that you cross to. I can't remember from memory.
I can fill you in that. It's, it's, there's two lanes on both sides. And the design of the roundabout makes it quite a high speed roundabout. So yes, you're not crossing four lanes at once. You are crossing two lanes coming off a roundabout and then subsequently crossing a further two lanes going on to a roundabout. So it's not, it's not easy crossing for sure.
So it's, but it's crossing away from the roundabout, isn't it? And I must admit, it isn't something that either the Highway Authority or the highway consultants had sort of specifically captured in the, in the highway improvements that were put forward. It's more concentrated on, like I say, crossing, trying to get continuous, the ability to cross with, you know, pushchairs, prams, et cetera, across side roads within the industrial state and improving a, there's one that comes down from Morgan Way, which is here, there's a, yeah, I think it's here. There's a, there's an existing footway that pops out, that brings you down onto Chapel Break Road, which is what was referenced within the report there. Which there is existing footway provision, lighting, et cetera. And, and it's enabling people to come up, Mayfly Way, which has had, again, more, more recent improvements by the Highway Authority, which is a footway cycleway that brings you up all the way up to Deere Road as well. So it's, it's not, it isn't a segregated cycleway. It's not that there's a new crossing proposed, zebra crossing for pedestrians to cross over near the access to the site onto Barnard Road to pick up footway provision on the opposite side. Because it's been dictated around constraints around ownership, that, like I say, there's small, there's sections within the industrial state where there isn't a path because it's in private ownership, but there's a path on the opposite side. So the, you know, it's, it's around the constraints of ownership as well, a lot of the works.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you for that. Our policy DM28, which we've, I think is one of the actual kind of, it's one of the highlights of our policies actually, and something this council can be very proud of, says cumulatively development proposals must ensure as far as practical that they would not result in an overall growth in the use of, in the city for travel by private car. And any anticipated increase in travel demand resulting from the development can be accommodated or diverted to non-car modes. So what we're saying is, as I, if I understand that policy correctly, is this shouldn't increase car usage. If anything, this development should reduce private car usage. Are we confident that a shop in this location will reduce car usage?
Can I come back on that? And it, it's, it's not quite that simple. Because as the speaker has mentioned, and as have, as we've mentioned in the, in the officer report, the, there is the fallback position whereby the existing building could be operated, could, could be accommodated, could be occupied, that's the word I'm looking for, for Class E purposes. So both the Namco Bowling Alley and a supermarket are both Class E. So effectively, there's no change of use. And you, you could have the existing bowling alley used for Class E retail with no reference to us at all. So what, and, and that is a realistic fallback position. So when we're looking at the impact of demolition and rebuild of a new Class E use, you have to bear that in mind. So it's, you're kind of making the best of what you're actually given. You're not starting with a blank, a blank sheet of paper. So then what we've tried to do is bearing in mind that fallback position is, is do all that we can to try and get improvements to the existing transport network. So, I mean, the, the existing use on the site is, is pretty kind of car dependent. It doesn't have, it doesn't have, it relies on the existing network. You could have a Class E retail use go into that unit with no improvements. So what we're, what we're doing through the process of this application is, yes, we're looking at DM28 as we're looking at other policies. But we're looking at it with it, with, with it in mind that this actually could change use without formal reference to the council. So it's, yeah, you, you're kind of making the, that, that our consideration of this, this application is constrained by the fallback use. So it might not fully comply with, with, with all the policies in the local plan. And also the policies in the local plan, they, they, it's, as you know, it's they um they, it it's, as you know, it's never simply a case of ticking off and saying it meets that one, it meets that one, it meets that. That would be great if it did. Sometimes it meets that one, doesn't quite meet that one, that one it can't meet, but it's it's I I mean, I take your point in terms of if we were starting with a blank sheet of paper, but um um we might actually be looking at um a different set of um mitigation, but we're we're not starting with a blank piece of paper.
So just promise one, very quick one. Um so o- o- on the on the fallback position, which I I take your point. Um essentially, if they, so they don't need to do any of the improvements that they're suggesting. So they could retain the same building and not do the Durham Road crossing and not do the job footways. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um sticking with, I mean, I've got loads of questions, but sticking with the transport issues for the moment. Um there's been something like four million plus spent on Durham Road upgrades over the past, well over the past year. The uh road, as you see it there with the roundabout, is subject to heavy congestion throughout the day, not just in rush hour in the morning um rush hour in the afternoon, but throughout mid morning and also the afternoon. Also, Barnard Road uh is the main uh access point for an industrial area where we have um kettle foods, Thompson's Packaging, Lindtop Industries, all of which use very, very heavy uh vehicles, taking raw materials in and finished products out. And that's not forgetting the other uh businesses that use this road as well. It's an extremely busy road uh used by heavy goods vehicles because it's an industrial area. Um we've been given a tenuous descriptions of improvements to the north of the start on Durham Road and also Barnard Road itself, and also some uh sort of access from um Chapel Break Road. I'd like to know exactly who did the traffic surveys for this. Did they take into consideration the heavy goods vehicles and the nature of an industrial area? Not only that, should these road improvements go ahead, who is going to foot the cost? Because as I said, there's already been over four million spent on Durham Road so far. County Council's got something like a forty one million pound black hole, so I can't see them uh having any spare cash to sort of make any improvements. So who is going to bear the cost of this and who actually did the traffic survey, which I think is highly flawed?
Um I mean, a- a- as is usual with 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 an application like this, the the traffic survey is done by a consultant um employed by the applicant, but it is tested by the county council. Um so it's not like well, yeah, it's it's tested by the county council for um and they are happy with their the conclusions of this particular uh particular assessment. Um I don't, with respect, I don't think the proposals are tenuous. I think they're actually, I mean, in terms of my understanding of the word tenuous, but they're they're actually quite specific about what the improvements um um across Durham Road and along Barnard Road and and the other access improvements actually are. Um and in terms of who would foot the cost, the developer would foot the cost. And um you're going to hate me by the end of this item, but I'm going to keep going back to the point about the fallback position. Um and that this could go to a classy retail use without planning permission. So you're kind of making the best of what you've got. Your consideration of this proposal is constrained. You do not have a blank sheet of paper. The fallback position is a a realistic material consideration and determination of the application. So um but ain't, but but go, but but yeah, going, just summarizing that. So the 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 survey was done by um an assessment was done by a consultant, reviewed by county council of no objection. They've accept, the county council has accepted the improvements uh that have been proposed. Um and you do have to be mindful of the fallback position here.
First of all, we're told that the consultant was contracted by the applicant. So straight away, they have uh an inherent bias. Secondly, uh county highways hardly has a good record in terms of um uh working on traffic flows. There've been har- uh serious questions about their ability to gauge traffic flows, for example, down Longwater Lane where, which is used as a rat run and their uh predictions of traffic there. There uh I had arguments with with highways in County Hall concerning the whole Durham Road development. And they they simply couldn't answer the questions concerning traffic flows because they didn't have the answer. They did, they have not conducted uh the traffic flows. Now, the, here's the fallback position. Fullback position is Little opened a store in there. Little of all, Little have already had a failed store in Mile Cross, which they closed. So the fallback position is we could lose a community facility. Uh yeah, um but uh they they could fail, move out and we end up with an empty building. So so my question is, how can we rely on Little being able to maintain a store here when there are so many other supermarkets within literally a few minutes' distance?
Um yeah, that's not actually really the 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 issue because what what in in terms of the planning use of the development, um what you required, you you you're not kind of questioning whether or not Little can maintain an operation, Little or anybody else can maintain an op- an operation. What you're asked to do from a planning point of view is whether or not that operation would impact adversely upon other established centres. So the ability, um you 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 kind of have to leave whether or not they can operate successfully from this particular site to the market. So that's not really a planning consideration that you might actually actually fail. I mean, Namco could fail tomorrow and you'd be left with a bit, with with an empty building. Um uh Little or whoever might go into it, they might fail, and then you'd be left with an a- an empty building. And then you'd have to, you'd be faced with a situation where so you'd have to come back with another development proposal to get a, to to um to get a use of that building. But the ability of a of an operator to operate from there um and maintain and maintain it economically is is for the market to decide, not not, I'm afraid, not for not not for others planners.
Then it doesn't meet the sequential, uh what was it, sequential development because the, we're told that uh it's going to have a minimal, it is a question. It, we're told it has a minimal impact on Roy's. So but it won't, the the serious aspect is this could cause Roy's to close and we lose a hub there. And then we also lose um other businesses there as they become nonviable and they close down. So uh how does that then meet sequential development?
If that happened, then potentially it wouldn't, but we don't have any evidence that that is actually going to happen. And on the evidence that we do have available, um the the assessments that have been carried out and we've had reviewed by a consultant that we've paid for um indicate that that is unlikely to happen.
Hmm. My first question hasn't been answered about the integration of uh pedestrian and cycle traffic with um heavy industrial vehicles moving along Barnard Road. How can you accommodate both of those? I cannot see that happening.
The, I I recognize your concerns around the the transport consultant working on behalf of an applicant, but that's what comes to us for all applications, you know, the 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 assessment is carried out in accordance with industry standard um guidance, techniques, information. The the, as it goes from memory, this was actually one of the better transport assessments that I've seen. It 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 did from memory have a good un- handle on the operation, the fact that it's an industrial estate, the fact, like I say, the fact that there's planned growth as well elsewhere in Bothorp, the fact that there was works undergoing um on the Durham Road and sought to incorporate all that together. I, it does, like I say, in terms of looking at whether they could accommodate a, perhaps a segregated um cycle route along uh Barnard Road itself, and they looked at um highway widths, the extent of the highway um that was in the ownership of the um Highway Authority, whether they could accommodate something without compromising the width of the road be, now, be on the understanding that HGVs use it and it wouldn't be acceptable to narrow the road um to, you know, to provide those additional benefits for cyclists. So the intention is that, you know, you've got a very good um link along Mayflower Way, along the um sort of east there that that takes pedestrians and cyclists between um the areas of um Chapel Break, Threescore and Bothorp, takes you up to the Durham Road. And then if you, you know, to to avoid conflicts with uh HGV traffic on Barnard Road, then you can go up there, come out on the Durham Road and pick up on those dedicated cycle way um additions that have been recently delivered on Durham Road itself.
Uh no, I I I do actually have a question. Actually, first first of all, go comment though that uh Little Store closed in Mile Cross because they built a much bigger store five minutes walk away. Uh the second, my my question is this. Um as far as I know, I I uh Durham Road, this section of Durham Road has quite good public transport si- uh network system. And of course, we, there's been concerns about um increasing car users. I would have thought that in many ways. Um it's so, so I mean, this three four bus goes up there in one of the twenty threes, twenty three splits into three routes, so Gossie Bar, no, one of them goes that true. But how how near is the nearest bus stop? As far as I can remember, it's not that far away. And it it would be actually provide quite a good uh link, I would have thought, for people using, which used to lose public transport.
Yeah, within in the report, I think I said it's about four hundred metres, so it's um, I've moved again on here, but it's it's incorporated within this new mobility hub um that is sort of on the costly side of the road at Durham Road, where I think there's sort of some micro mobility, you know, you can bake your scooters and your bikes there. There's better bus stop provision with um real time information. Um and the the crossing will allow you to cross to that side of the road to then go and access that bus facilities there, which would be beneficial if not for customers but for staff as well.
So really quick one. Thank you, Chair. Um the the ramp, I appreciate it's been shortened to um in regards, in relation to trees. Um has it been assessed in terms of LTM one twenty cycle provision? Because it, from the, I don't know if you can get it out, but the picture of it looks extremely tight for anything other than the smallest, most conventional bicycle. Basically, it goes up and then can cuts back immediately on itself. Uh we don't normally make cycle provision, do U-turns in that regard.
Yeah, you, I think the expectation is you 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 crossing, you wouldn't be riding down there at big speeds or anything. You you're transversing there to get into the it's not part of a long distance cycle route, if you see what I mean. And there also has been a request which we would hopefully pick up in the planning conditions from our landscape architect about having a wheel um channel so that people could actually wheel if if they didn't want to take the ramped access and was just after the shortcut that you'd have a, you could actually dismount your bike and push it down the shortest um knowing desire lines and people not wanting to do long routes, et cetera, et cetera. But it will be in terms of the LTM one twenty, I can't, it would be dealt with via um as part of the section two seven eight process with the county council highways. And as part of the whole, they have to have a safety audit and they have to, you know, meet the requirements of the um whether it's specific LTM one twenty compliant, I'm not certain.
Uh I can actually answer councillor Kendrick's question about the bus. People get off at the bus hub, hubs are then faced with that roundabout, which is extremely busy. Um yes, my question is on pa- comes from page fifty four. And along with cutting down the oak trees, which I find reprehensible, quite frankly. Um it says here, one point one five one, the landscaping proposals do little to break up the car parking area. And that's saying that the way the cars are wrapped around is going to, you know, improve the, I'm not too sure about that. Um this approach, it would, it says it would would not differ significantly from the general approach taken to functional, easily maintained site landscaping across the wider employment area. Now, I don't know, maybe I've heard this incorrectly. But what this is basically saying is it's an industrial area, and correcting if I'm wrong, obviously. It's an industrial area, so minimum amount of planting has occurred. I mean, we've got the hedges on on Durham Road and so forth. But that's more around the hotel. Is it saying that it's acceptable to have that minimal amount of planting that we currently have in an industrial area? In an area that is now going to become very much a publicly used commercial site? Um because it's, it might be acceptable to have minimal planting around an industrial area because it's industrial area, it's got industrial units. But is that okay to then have it around a site that's going to be used commercially?
It, it's it's the balance, isn't it, between providing your car parking, yeah, getting your access to the store, getting your cycle um paths and your pedestrian paths versus um providing those landscaping uh and tree benefits. There there has been a concentration around the um exterior, you know, the boundaries, let's say, so the northern boundary, the creation of a new southern boundary, let's say, and 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 some uh planting along the western boundary. Um we had a look to see whether or not there'd be an opportunity to to intersperse some within uh across the car parking area itself. How successful these are, you know, we've all been to car parks that have been in supermarkets and and industrial sites with the odd tree put in the middle of the car park and half of them are dead. Um it's it's trying to concentrate your efforts where it might make the most um provide the most benefit in terms of green infrastructure links and those continued um linkages. And yes, as the reference in there to the rest of the industrial state, it was just sort of a point really that there isn't you know, there's large areas of car parking that are not broken up very much by landscaping. It's not saying do the same as that. But I think the the concentration of the efforts was around the exterior of the site, the boundaries of the site in this instance.
That tree protection is is not an issue anymore?
The the trees on the site were uh were put under a preservation order by the council at the start of this process. Um with the with the intention being to ensure that we get ensure that we minimize losses and that we get adequate replacement where a loss is necessary. Because without that, you you have um less leverage, let's say, to get those replacements in. Um like, like I say, we've tried, they've tried to minimize the losses and we've had discussions with the tree, our our tree officer that was the one that put the the tree preservation order on there in the first place. Um and he's happy that we we can get some suitable replacements in a line along the Durham Road frontage that will over time, admittedly not immediately, make up for the loss and ensure that that you have that continuation of the the green boundary along Durham Road.
So basically, tree protection orders aren't worth the paper they're written on.
No, that's not the case at all. I'm sorry. No, well, if we had not put the tree preservation orders on those trees, they could have been removed and we wouldn't be having this discussion because they probably already have gone. Sorry? If there's no TPO on them, the the landowner would just could could uh could potentially just cut them down. Well, I I I I disagree with that because it allows us to, as Sarah has said, it actually gives us more leverage when we're actually discussing replacement planting. Um and um it also meant that they couldn't, those trees couldn't be removed during the development process. So we are actually now in a position, because we serve those TPAs, to have the discussion about um whether or not A, it's appropriate to remove them, and I appreciate that members can come to a different um decision. But at least serving the TPO actually allows us to have this, that discussion. If we, if um um if the the TPO hadn't been served, we wouldn't be able if the TPO hadn't been served, we wouldn't be able to have the discussion with the same with the same amount of authority and control over the process. So it's, I'm sorry, it's just, it's just wrong to say that TPOs are not worth the paper they're written on. They afford protection to trees in the development, in the development process.
Yeah, and I've got a question about the loss of community use thing. Because obviously, you know, from the report and from the comments that are online, the objective comments, it's clear that we acknowledge there is some, there is a community use to this site, it does benefit from that status. I know that the applicant has, what was it, 13 existing community facilities, but I think we all agree within 800 metres, but I think we all agree they don't actually cover the use that this is being used here. And I think it's fair to say we can all agree that some of the community use that's getting out of this site can't be met by other bowling facilities in Norwich, can't comment on the Deirham one, but having been to the others, they are noisy, you know. For some of these groups, they're talking about like adults with special educational needs visiting them, they wouldn't be suitable. But it seems that we can't do anything about that. Because it all comes down to commercial viability. Is that correct? That there's nothing we can do to say this is a site of community use and we want to protect it?
They've they've been through, like I say, the the process of the following through the the policy, they've they've looked at what the alternatives are. I think we are, we'll all have to admit, a bowling alley, a bowling facility is quite a specialist provision, and it's not something that you can just provide within any, any building. Norwich is quite well served with four, at the moment, existing bowling facilities for the size of Norwich, you know, a lot of places don't have one or maybe have one. So there are alternatives there. I'm not certain whether some of the, you know, the the league bowlers and the the clubs and the specialist requirements, whether they've actually been in contact with any of the bowling facilities in Norwich, see whether or not they can be accommodated.
It says, I think, in the thing that they, in the objections online, that they have been, I think.
Okay. But, you know, whether there's any opportunity to to get a quiet point in in the day at any of those facilities. But yeah, the the, and like I say, in terms of that specialist league provision, my understanding, there is some existing provision elsewhere in the county, but admittedly, it's further afield, but for something that's quite specialist, then some of those representations were made for, were from people that were travelling in from quite a distance from outside Norwich as well. So it's it's a draw because of like, say, that specialist provision that they they may be drawn to somewhere else. It's 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 a difficult one to but in terms of other thing. Comments that were being made by some users of it as well, were around the social elements of it. You know, the meeting up with people, then, you know, there are admittedly, of those 13 community facilities within 800 metres, there wasn't a bowling facility, but there was, there were community centres, there were other places for sport, for recreation, for, you know. So it's, people are accessing the NAMCO site for all sorts of uses, aren't they?
Just just to come back on that, I mean, you you asked whether or not it was just down to to viability. I mean, that does come into it in some respect because the the information that we've been presented as part of the application also argues that it's not, it it's difficult to make a notwithstanding all the all the community use of what is essentially a commercial facility as well. But given the age of the building and the requirement that that it's been suggested in it and for for reinvestment in 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 a relatively old building, it has been suggested that it's not, that that it's not viable to actually undertake that refurbishment as well. So viability does come into it, but it's not the sole argument. I mean, the 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 other issue about the community use and the loss of is is this scenario where they are both now in the same use class and can flip from one to the other without planning permission. So it does make it much more difficult for us as planners and users, planning application committee members to protect those community uses when they happen to fall in to the same use class as a result of 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 changes that the original policy didn't anticipate and we've got no control over. So that that, again. Fallback position is is also, as is viability and and the other issues that Sarah's referred to. Sorry.
Mine is, mine is a one word answer, Keith. Is this, is this designated as an asset of community value? Thank you.
Were Sport England, Age Concern or any of the disability rights groups consulted concerning the loss of this as a community facility? Because as I understand it, this is only one of two bowling facilities that provide certain sort of specialist returns, shall I say, yeah.
And the short answer to your question is 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 no, there's no requirement to consult Sport England on the loss of something that's a community facility. The the requirement to consult Sport England is on the loss of sports pitches. So no, we didn't consult Sport England on this one. No, they don't, there's no, there's no, there's no requirement through the regs to consult Sport England. So we 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 didn't consult them on this one. I mean, the the, I think this kind of links back. And forgive me if I'm making an erroneous connection, but to the point that councillor Haynes raised about the the ability of, there are other bowling alleys in Norwich, some of which may be able to, I mean, I take the point about the statement about the kind of leagues and stuff, but some of them may be able to offer if there was a demand, for example, quiet hours for people with ASD, for example, and other sensory issues. So the, some of the some of what gets offered here could be offered elsewhere if there was demand for it. But the biggest issue here is is is, as I keep going back to this issue of Class E, and that it it could become that our ability to control the loss of the bowling alley is severely restricted by the changes to the use class order.
Okay, we're going on to the discussion now. I'm not going to move a recommendation because I've been told I don't have to anymore. So that way we can do it. But if you're going to make a speech, that means that you've practically gone against the recommendation. So you need to come up with something to recommend to the committee and get a second, so we can have a boot on it. Councillor Calvert.
I'm very concerned about the active travellers, I'm sure you've worked out. I'm not so much to the north, but to the south. I think it's going to be extremely difficult for the people who are expanding Bothorp to get to that destination other than by a car. And the more people arrive by car, the more congestion there'll be on our roads. It also, Bothorp has, in some areas, up to 40% of households do not have cars. It's a matter of social exclusion for those people to not be able to get to their local shops. I do appreciate what's been said about the fallback position. I just have doubts that they will fall back on that approach of converting the bowling alley to a shop to avoid planning commission. So I just, I I don't buy it. There you go.
Just a, an answer to the whole bowling centre thing. And the nearest bowling centre is Bowling House, which is 3.6 miles away on Deirham Road. They have comedy club, they have life drawing classes, if you're interested in participating, being a model for that, Chair. Do you know what life drawing classes? They have Babs Bonkers British Bingo Bash. But it's no mention of people with disabilities playing. It's also one hour and 10 minutes to walk it. Hollywood Bowl and Riverside and Super Bowl also have no intention of having people with disability having teams and and then being able to play against other people. They're, I mean, the commercial premises, let's face it. This is a club. It's, it's not just there for socialising, although you do have people going over there, you know, doing games, tempin bowling, bowling sessions. But there's not another bowling centre in Norwich that supports disabled bowlers. So that means it's a loss of access for people with disability. And the Equality Act of 2010, since we've been doing that today, requires sports facilities to make reasonable adjustments to ensure disabled people can access and participate. This includes physical adjustments, changes to practices and providing assistance. Now, David said some of them might do that. Some of the other bowling alleys, and that's a very, you know, vague might. NAMCO is a sports facility for tempin bowling and very successful. They've had teams from there participating in competitions and winning overseas as well as here. This is a huge community loss. Losing this centre is a huge community loss. And to have it replaced with yet another supermarket from a huge global conglomerate when the local community is already well served with supermarkets, including Roy's Norfolk brand, established 1895, I know it's written on my bag. Is a slap in the face in particular for people with disabilities to use the centre for socialising, and also it's a slap in the face for the people who use Roy's. I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Yes, I I think there's no way we can, we can honestly say that a new supermarket isn't going to bring more more cars into into the area. We just can't. I also think that, you know, it already has used Class E. If the bowling alley shuts down, fine, little can move into it. Then, you know, we're not losing trees that have got a TPO. And we're not actively encouraging more car drivers into the area. So I too will be voting against it.
So Chair, the next, so as there's no motion on the table, as councillor Davis has just said, that any motion could be put forward in this case. So we were at nothing and now we have a proposal to refuse, refuse, and then we'll need some planning grounds and a second. Thank you, Chair.
Shall we, Chair, add reasons to vote against it?
No, it's not an asset of community value, no.
A loss of amenity, is that what you're talking about?
It's, it's, the bowling alley is designated as a community facility.
A loss of community facility. I think it contradicts policies, here we go. DM1, DM28, paragraph 110, 115, 117. Thank you. Sorry, I'm going for the travel ones, DM1, DM28, paragraphs 110, 115, 117 of the National Planning Policy Framework 2024 and the Greater Norwich Local Plan 2, bullet 3. I believe, I'm just reading your notes.
Okay, can I ask why? Because that's the fundamental point. Why, why does it go against those policies?
The the broad point here is Development Management Policy 28, the reduction of car use and the increase the net loss or net reduction in car use. It doesn't and it won't, they haven't resulted in that deep reduction in car use. Nor will it provide quality transport links to particularly the south, the greater Bothorp area, as you might call that.
Thank you, Chair, sorry. Or the, can I just ask councillor Calvert just to repeat that because that was rather quick, so I can just get
My apologies.
DM1.
Oh, sorry, I'm just, I'm just, just hold on because the the main ones I'm quoting here are DM1, which is Sustainable Development, DM28, which is transport, sustainable transport, correct me if I'm wrong.
Can I, can I make a suggestion that we actually rather than attach specific policies to your reasons for refusal, that you actually cover the issues that that you think it contravenes and then we can kind of come up with a with a policy connection, which is what we've done previously.
From the south of Norwich, excuse me, the south of the site, which is Greater Bothorp, there isn't sufficient Um, there isn't sufficient travel provision for those walking and cycling. Um, the particularly Barnard Road is particularly unsuitable for cycling. Um, it, the, the proposal does allow some improvements for walking, but I don't think them sufficient, given the distance from Bothorp. And given the, uh, road, help me out here, Mike. South of the next one down from Barnard Road, which is Chapel Break. Thank you. Yes, yes, which is not overlooked. Forgive me, Chair, I don't think we're at the debating stage. Um. Uh, and in addition, crossings of major roads are uncontrolled. Um, therefore doesn't fit into the greater network of walking and cycling in the area. I, I do accept that there is mayflyway, um, which requires a much greater distance and crossing Deerham Road twice. Uh, so as to make the cycling distance significantly longer than the driving distance and therefore unattractive. Is that?
So can I summarise that in that it fails to provide adequate access for non-car modes?
Yes, you can definitely condense it that way if you feel fit.
At the moment, I've got loss of community facility. Uh, fails to result in a reduction in car use and fails to provide adequate access for non-car modes.
Can I also add in biodiversity, saying there's only going to be a negligible net gain of two percent? Um, and I, I think that can be, be argued that actually will not be a net gain in biodiversity by replacing mature trees with young trees.
I was going to say at Carrington. But I'll, I'll also add that there is, is going to be increased traffic, definitely. And the access, um, from public transport on the other side of that roundabout is, is very poor. It's, it's unsafe.
I think we've probably captured that in councillor Calvert's suggestion that it fails to provide adequate access for non-car modes. Um, question on the biodiversity. I think that there's, there's a difference between biodiversity and the loss of the trees because the, 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 the evidence, and it is about evidence rather than, um, a opinion, the evidence is that there is a, and even with the loss of the trees, there is an increase in biodiversity of two percent. So I don't think there's any, we don't have any evidence at the moment that that isn't true. So, um, but if, if, if there is an issue with the loss of the trees, then you need to find a different reason for that. Not biodiversity.
Yeah, the loss of the oak trees, as you know, there's a lot of, uh, new, um, development going on in Threescore and, and Bothorp. And we have had other trees lost in those developments, which we've fought against. This is once again a situation where the loss of trees that have had, what did she say, thirty years of growth so far? And as Cam pointed out, they don't even get their acorns for another ten years. I think the loss of trees is an extremely important one. We should be embracing what's already there when it's historical like this. We shouldn't be saying, well, let's wipe it away because we want to put a supermarket there. So I don't know how you want to word that, but that's it.
Um, but that I, I need you to word that. I need, I need the committee to actually put that in a form of words that actually relates to planning.
Okay, so that a lot, loss of the oak trees would be a loss of community what? You tell me. Okay. Anyone else want to give me a word that's, that, that's attached to trees? All right, okay, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll try and help you. I mean, the, 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 the trees are there, the trees.
Something to do with history of the area.
Yeah, I mean, this, members really kind of need to, if, if they're going to suggest a reason for refusal, they need to be able to connect it to planning grounds. I mean, you need to kind of think about why the TPO is there. The TPO is there to protect them, um, because they have or could potentially have, uh, an amenity value in the wider streetscape.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, but you, okay. Um, and also, um. Oh, okay, there's, and then there's another point. Sorry, can I just make that? Um, that it does, well, okay. I mean, there's an issue that there's a potential reason for refusal if members are minded in, in terms of um, whether or not the loss of the protected trees substantially improves the overall approach to design and landscaping. Um, so, I mean, you could argue, you could argue that it doesn't do that. It's not necessary to, um.
Can we have it just a loss of protected trees?
No.
Full stop.
No, you need to, because, um, this is, this is a common misunderstanding about TPOs. It doesn't mean you can't remove a TPO tree. You can, but you have to have reasons for doing so.
So can I suggest we make that reason loss of visual amenity to the site? Is that what we're trying to say?
Um, uh, it has to be wider amenity value to the surrounding area, not just to the site.
Okay, the wider amenity value to the streetscape, which is Deerham Road.
Yep.
Yeah, have I got the words?
Well, you've got words, yeah. Okay.
Yes, Chair. So, yeah, so I'll just clarify this obviously with my colleagues to the right and, and with, and then we'll confirm with the proposal and second to make sure that it is as, um, they would prefer it of. Yeah, so I have that the application is refused for the following reasons. The loss of the community facility, loss of protected trees is not necessary and wider and would have a detrimental impact on the, to the wider amenity area to the streetscape of Deerham Road. And lack of access for non-car modes, I believe that was the key points as we went through the discussion because we took out, I believe, the point about biodiversity, which was discussed. Um, but Chair, that's what I have done. I'd, I'd invite, um.
I, I, I have an additional item, which is it fails to result in a reduction in car use. So I've got, um, four reasons for refusal.
Full refusal.
Full refusal.
Full refusal.
Full refusal.
Yep, we're back online.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we resume the planning committee today. We've now moved on to our last one on the agenda. And it's, uh, ninety one Upper St Giles, page sixty seven to ninety six. Now I ask the planning officer to resume to take us through the report. Thank you.
Sorry, before Vishnu starts, can I just, our colleagues who are watching online, um, said it was actually quite difficult to hear people as part of the um, previous items. So if members can just remember to use their mics and have them close enough to them. Thank you.
The application seeks planning permission for a range of, uh, external works, including installation of a new WC, a canopy over the courtyard, replacement of an existing flue, alterations to the courtyard steps and resurfacing of the alleyway. And the application is also seeking a listed building concern uh, for the all sort of external works as well as internal works to the first ten second floors. The site is a three-storey building with a basement located on the north side of Upper St Giles. It's currently vacant. Historically, the ground floor was used as a shop, while the first ten second floors together form a single residential flat. Upper St Giles is within the walking distance of the city centre and is characterised by commercial uses at ground, ground floor level with residential accommodation above. At the rear of the subject property is a courtyard located on the north side, uh, of the building, as you can see here in my, my cursor. So that's a, that's a courtyard. And, uh, the, the courtyard is accessed via a shared alleyway with gates on both sides. And that's the alleyway which is shared by the eighty nine and ninety one Upper St Giles. Immediately to the north of the site is Watling's Court, a residential complex. And that's Watling's Court and to the east is eighty nine Upper St Giles. And to the west is ninety three Upper St Giles, which is currently operating as a cafe known as Bread Source. There is an existing flue located on the north, northern elevation of the building. It's not visible from the site. And it, it's open to this narrow enclosed space between two walls with limited access. So that's where this proposed flow is located. The site is a grade two listed building and is situated within the St Giles character area, a part of city centre conservation area. Several other heritage buildings are also located along the street and the site falls within an area of main archaeological interest. An enforcement case has been registered to this property in two thousand twenty three. It relates to another east internal works on first and second floors. These works were stopped following the enforcement investigation and now being addressed through this application. So coming to the proposal. Uh, while the ground floor was previously used as a shop and is now proposed to operate as a cafe, both uses fall under the use class E. As such, no planning permission is required for the change of use itself. Therefore, the proposed cafe is not under consideration in this application. The external works proposed include installation of a new WC on the southeast corner of the rear courtyard. Uh, there's a mistake in the report. I've mentioned that as southwest corner. It's not southwest. In southwest, it's southeast corner of the courtyard, which is right here. An addition of an openable lowered canopy above the rear courtyard, which you can see the section here. And the canopy will be coming over this, this part of the courtyard. Uh, there is an exist, the existing flue will be replaced with a larger, more efficient unit to be installed on the same location on the north elevation. As I've mentioned before, the flue is not visible from the building, but in elevation, if you look at, that's where the proposed flow is getting replaced. There is already an existing flue and this will be replaced with a more efficient unit. Minor external works also are proposed, including some adjustments and rearrangement to this existing, uh, stair arrangement and resurfacing of the, uh, pavement in this, this, this alleyway. In terms of internal changes, uh, listed building concern is sought for the installation of kitchen, which is coming here, a bathroom in the first floor and a wardrobe and an ensuit on the second floor. These works are part of the broader refurbishment of the residential accommodation on the upper floors. As the proposal does not involve a change of use and both the existing and proposed uses falls within the same classification, planning permission is not required for this conversion. The use of courtyard as an outdoor dining area for the proposed cafe is associated with the lawful use of the site, class E, and is therefore not considered development. So it does not require a planning permission. The first and second floors of the property functions as a single residence under class C three, and no change of use is proposed. The proposed alterations are, alterations are therefore acceptable in principle. Uh, moving to the design, the proposed new WC is on the southeast corner and which is considered, uh, reasonable. The scale is appropriate. It fits well within the corner and it does not obstruct the alleyway. The openable pergola is proposed above the rear of, uh, rear courtyard to provide weather protection for the cafe's outdoor dining area. It will be a standalone structure, not fixed onto the grade two listed building, but anchored to the ground with supporting columns as seen in this section. The proposed scale is acceptable and the structure will sit below the eaves of the building and will not fix to the listed building. This has been reviewed and supported by the Design and Conservation Officer. The replacement flue, uh, is proposed at the rear of the building, which is coming here and in plan, he'll, he'll, he'll come here. So the replacement flue is proposed at the rear of the building. This elevation is not visible from the courtyard and it's only accessible from the Watling's Court. The new flue will be larger and more efficient than the existing one, will reuse the existing current aperture for the installation. This, this replacement is supported and installation details will be secured by a condition. Moving on to the internal works are mainly associated with the remodeling of the first and second floor residence, including the installation of bathroom, uh, kitchen on the first floor and an ensuit, uh, on the second floor. Some of these works, such as installation of stud walls of, of for the bathroom and removal of the ballast rates and doors, had already been started and were stopped following an enforcement investigation. Conservation and Design Officers reviewed these unauthorized works and requested detailed drawings. Additional drawings, uh, were submitted and reviewed. The first floor layout has been amended to restore the original proportions of the room. The stud wall near the shower has been removed, so there was a stud wall here, which has now been removed and replaced with a, a glass partition. The height of this, uh, stud wall is reduced to eighty centimetres so that this angle of wall is visible from the room to maintain the existing proportions. With these amendments to the proposal. With these amendments to the proposal, Conservation and Design concluded that the level of harm to the grade two building's significance and historic fabric is considered less than substantial. Overall, the proposed internal and external works are considered to cause less than substantial harm to the grade two listed building. This harm is overweight by the public benefits, which include economic viability of the ground floor cafe, the associated local employment and contribution of upper, upper, upper floor residents to the local housing supply. Regarding the amenity, we have received several objections raising the concerns about potential noise from the courtyard. It's acknowledged that the change in use of the ground floor from a shop to cafe will result in increased activity and visitor numbers, which may lead to some level of noise from the customers. It's also acknowledged that having an open dining with fourteen proposed seats in the rear courtyard will contribute additional noise. However, the use of courtyard as a dining space complements with the existing ground floor cafe use, since this does not constitute as a development, planning permission is not required. That said, the cafe is subject to licence, which permits it to operate between seven thirty AM to eleven PM. And the licence restricts the use of courtyard to nine PM from Sunday to Thursday and to eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays. It also allows the scale, sale of alcohol daily between eight AM to ten thirty PM. The site is located within city centre retail and secondary, secondary retail area, both of which support similar commercial uses. The anticipated customer noise is within acceptable limits and is not expected to cause significant harm to the nearby residents. A noise impact assessment and a noise management plan were submitted with the application. While some representations questioned the credibility of the report, since it was in prepared by a person registered with Institute of Aquatics, our environment protection officer reviewed the assessment. They confirmed that the methodology and the equipment used were appropriate and consistent with industry standards. The officer now have also visited the site and found the report satisfactory. The, to protect neighbouring occupant. To protect neighboring occupants from potential noise and order from the flu, the officer recommended a condition requiring the installation of carbon filters and a silencer for the extraction unit. There were also concerns about fire hazard due to the wooden ceiling in the alleyway. This is a subject alleyway and proposed canopies above the courtyard as well as the possibility of the alleyway and street frontage being used as a smoking area. It's important to note that the wooden ceiling is already existing feature and no changes are proposed to it. The applicant has confirmed that smoking will not be allowed in the in the courtyard or on the premises and signs will be installed to reinforce that this policy. Some representations also mentioned the potential noise from doors, toilet flushing and extractor fans and order from the proposed W C on the courtyard. However, an additional W C is already provided in the first floor for the customer use. The associated noise and order levels are not expected to cause significant harm to the neighboring amenity. Moreover, the use of this courtyard W C is limited by cafes' operating hours as set out in the license. Although the courtyard is enclosed by surrounding walls, it can be seen from some neighboring flat windows as seen in the picture. Use of the roof terrace at eighty nine Upper St Giles also was also raised as a potential privacy concern. And that's eighty nine Upper St Giles. And however, both courtyard and the terrace are existing features and no change of use is proposed as part of this application. The addition of retractable canopies is intended to improve privacy by limiting views into and out of the courtyard. As such, it's considered that the development would not result in unacceptable harm or detrimental impact on the neighboring properties. The applicant's need for an indoor W C is understood. The W C is located on the first floor, as you can see, that's an existing W C and the applicant is proposing to use that W C for the customer use. The W C is located in the first floor and adjacent to the staircase landing, which is which also serves as a shared circulation area between first and second floors. So that's a shared circulation area. As from first floor, you can access second floor only by this passage here. While the idea of introducing a door at the landing to separate the W C was explored initially, but it ultimately dismissed as it was very impractical and the conservation and design officer didn't approve that proposal. Given that staircase connects both floors and is shared, it's important to ensure that cafe's operation does not negatively impact the residential unit above. To manage this, the first floor dwelling will remain functionally associated with the ground floor cafe business. This will be secured by a planning condition. In summary, while cafe operations may cause some level of disturbance to neighboring amenity, no change of use being proposed. Subject to the recommended recommended condition related to noise and order control from the proposed flu, the proposal is not considered to result in any unacceptable harm to the neighboring properties. In terms of waste storage and collection, a dedicated bin is proposed near the W C of the ground floor cafe. The waste will be collected four to five times a week and bins will be moved to the street only during the collection times to avoid blocking off this alleyway. For the first floor flat, refuse bags are proposed instead of bins. One representation did refer to time and restrictions from a two thousand four application for the change of use of from shop A one to cafe A three, later amended in two thousand seven, which limited the use of courtyard to eight P M. This is mentioned in the updates report. However, A one and A three users have been merged to a single class E under the updated user use class order of two thousand twenty. This class covers a wide range of commercial uses, including retail and cafes, and changes within this class do not require planning permission. The current proposal is to operate the cafe in line with the existing licensing approval, which allow courtyard use until nine P M from Sunday to Thursday and until eleven P M on Fridays and Saturdays. To reintegrate, the cafe use is not being considered under the planning application because the existing and proposed use both falls within classy and no planning consent is required. Any issues with licensing hours would need to be addressed through premise license variation. And subject to the conditions set out in the report, we recommend approval for both planning application and listed building concern.
We have four speakers, I think, plus a letter from a local councillor. If I ask them to read the letter first, if possible, from councillor Schmira.
Yeah, this was received before. It was received within in the building by via email before the closure for the updates report, but it went to a general inbox. So it wasn't actually circulated to case officer until after the updates report had been issued. It is a representation from councillor Martin Schmira, the Green Party councillor for Mancroft Ward. So I will just read it out, read out what he has written. I wish to raise my objections to the plans for the new restaurant at ninety one Upper St Giles. The plans seem to include capacity for approximately two dozen diners in the courtyard outside. While I know this was once a cafe, I fear that having a potentially far later opening restaurant there could cause disruption from diners in a very enclosed space that could lead to the noise echoing off the surrounding walls into the evening, thus affecting residents nearby on Upper St Giles and also at the back in Watling's Court. Added to this are questions about the noise and the fumes coming from the new flu. I understand a noise assessment has been made, but I still fear the plans would create too noisy an environment for neighbours. In any case, a new flu would still be emitting smells and potentially smoke behind the building towards nearby houses, which may not be pleasant, especially in summer months when residents are likely to have their windows open. I believe that this application therefore contradicts the council's own planning policies as set out in Development Management Policy Two, which states, "Development will be permitted where it would not result in an unacceptable impact on the amenity of the area or the living or working conditions or operations of neighboring occupants. Particular regard will be given to A, the prevention of overlooking and the loss of privacy, B, the prevention of overshadowing and loss of light and outlook, and C, the prevention of disturbance from noise, odor, vibration, air or artificial light pollution. As someone who used to live very nearby for several years on Damocles Court off Pottergate, I know the historic nature of this lovely part of the city centre. I of course want to see local businesses thrive, but I do want to ensure that this is done in a way that doesn't detrimentally affect local residents. Hence my concerns." There's yeah, there's then a thing, but I don't think he meant to put in it's that, but it does say, if you'd like to express your views on this matter, you can still do so on the plant council's planning website. I think that's there because he took that from a a letter that he circulated to residents. And that is councillor Martin Schmira, Green Party councillor for Mancroft Ward.
You don't forget. We've also got a few other speakers. So the first one is Dan Hyde. If you can come up and you alone three minutes, three minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems the council unfortunately unfortunately with this application has lost its sense of democracy. Everything we have concerns about and objections to with reference to ninety one's planning application has seemed to have been shoved under the carpet with what has become a standard standard conclusion that this is class E where planning permission is not required. From late night drinking in the courtyard to an old fashioned outdoor toilet insensitive insensitively placed directly below our kitchen window, with bins for smelly food waste and bins for clanking glass bottles placed directly next to that. A smoky and likely noisy extractor fan placed further along adjacent to our roof terrace. Cafe ninety one can even play music in the courtyard if they wish. All of our objections have been answered with, don't worry, that's all classy, planning commission is not required. It seems like, in other words, put up and shut up. Whereas D M two, the amenity, quoted from city council's very own policy, states permission should not be given where there is A, overlooking or loss of privacy. We have both of those. And B, the prevention of noise, odor, vibration, and C, air quality, which I assume means smoke. And we don't know what type of food will be cooked there. The restaurant that Mr Turan currently owns called Hagel in St Benedict's Street. There's, you know, lots of smoke coming out of kitchens there, you know. All these considerations, all this, all these are considered by planning as class E, planning not required. Having glanced through the padded the padded out eighty page report compiled by Mr Vishnu, there is an absence of any independent assessors. The noise impact assessment done by the same person who got the late licence licensing hours passed through, the environmental protection officer employed by the council concludes concludes in his report with the application is not going to affect the amenity. This is simply not true. It is a creeping factor which is imposing on the delicate balance between residential and business amenities. For those who in the room who don't know, we have lived and worked at eighty nine Upper St Giles Street for the past twenty five years. We are responsible law abiding, tax paying citizens of Norwich who make a modest living from recycling antique bathroom fittings with very little impact on the environment or the immediate amenity. We strongly feel that the redevelopment of Cafe ninety one will impact on us and the twenty five neighboring flats of Watling's Court, negatively in terms of noise nuisance in the courtyard and in particular to us internally, as the shared walls of both properties are thin on the first and second floors. There hasn't been any mention of soundproofing at these levels. When ninety one was last inhabited, we could clearly hear noises from the stairs, noise from the toilet flushing and even the neighbours speaking. In my opinion, it seems the council is biased towards granting profit making enterprises, which in turn provide revenue for the council, all at a cost to the residents to the residents' peace and quiet in their own homes, which is which is incidentally a European human right. We purchased eighty nine in nineteen ninety nine. We deliberately chose the property as it was far enough away from pubs, one of the golden rules of buying a property. It is our investment pension as well as our home and workplace. We fear Cafe ninety one's development will undermine our value, quality of life and ultimately force us to move on.
I was just stopped. You're there. You had four minutes already, I'm afraid. Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Brown. And you have three minutes as well. Thank you.
As you may know now, we lived there for twenty five years and mainly residential and ninety one application for alcohol to be consumed late night in an outdoor courtyard overlooked by us and at twenty five flats in Watton Court. The rear couldn't be more inappropriate. The council has just allowed a license for Cathy and Elm Hill in a similar demographic. Mr Turan applied for a license in December twenty twenty two with inside knowledge that Dan and myself were going to be on holiday for a month, resulting in to us unaware of the application and so therefore unable to make any objections. We attended the license committee, but we were not allowed to voice our objections. Twice, we invited planning officer Vishu to visit our dwelling so we could see for himself how close we live to ninety one and how much our lives will be affected by long hours of usage in the courtyard. The outdoor toilet and smoke extractor fan. Vishu ignored our invite and did not even bother to send a colleague round. We are five minutes walk away from City Hall. In our opinion, the council have completely overlooked its responsibility to local residents and wellbeing and quality of city life. We we and Watling's Court neighbours will be subjected to unwanted noise from seven thirty in the morning to eleven at night, most nights, without even a day of peace. As on Sunday, there's no time or streets in the city that are such more suitable for the enterprise. Cafe ninety one unbelievably play music in the courtyard if it chooses. A live band permitted to. There, this is a long. This is with us a long concern and objections are permitted by the council classy which seem to be a massive loophole for applications who does does whatever they wish, he wish. An outdoor toilet block these days, really, previously a cafe had toilets which can be reinstated inside. Outdoor toilet directly below our kitchen window. Now we hear the bins being next door to the toilet. We're not looking forward to the sound of breaking glass or smelly bins outside. And larger, we would kindly ask for a reduction of the courtyard permitted hours and a day of peace on Sundays, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is Ang. You toss good. Thank you. Sorry about that. And you have three minutes as well.
I'm sorry.
You have three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll try. I I couldn't see my photograph up there, but I might have made a mistake. That's the view which I submitted from my home.
Never seen it.
It went as an attachment to my application, which was sent to Vishnu.
Did you? Sorry, did you ask for it to be displayed at this meeting?
I'm sorry.
Did you? Sorry, did you ask for the photo to be displayed at the meeting?
Well, it went with my objection.
Okay, we we would only normally display photos if 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 they if you've asked for them to be specifically displayed.
I don't know where that was written down. I didn't see that.
Okay, okay. But we we don't display individual objections at the committee.
They weren't on the compilation.
Yeah, because we because, as I say, we don't normally display photos.
Anyway, today is V E day and my uncle died in a spitfire defending this country. And so we so we could all live in a democracy and I'm here today today defending my home. I've lived in Watling's Court, which backs on to the courtyard of ninety one Upper St Giles Street for twenty five years. It is a block of twenty five flats and maisonettes in a calm and quiet area due to the fact that it is set back from Cow Hill. Also, noise reverberates around the communal concrete concourse. And as such, the leases for the properties at Watling's Court do not allow for private barbecues, thus not producing noise and odours pervading through the area and disturbing other residents. In order to approve this application, I've read I have read through the documentation. I feel the council have made some errors in the responses to objections and would like to give some examples here. The council states, quote, "Subject to conditions relating to the noise and odor control of the proposed flu, the development is not considered to result in an unacceptable harm to residential amenity." I mean, why has the council said it won't? Because it will. The council response to objections has ignored the effect of the courtyard noise, including the flu, noise from the raised voices due to liquor, the W C outside and any emanating odours on the quality of life of the neighbouring residential life in favour of profit making businesses. An example of the council ignoring the quality of life of residents has recently happened in Rights Court Elm Hill, where licensing have approved late night courtyard drinking in a residential area. Number seventy three on the list, quote, "Representations..." Number seventy three on the list, quote, representations have raised concerns about potential noise generated from the courtyard. It is acknowledged that the change in use of the ground floor from shop to cafe will result in an increased activity and visitors' numbers, which may lead to some level of noise from customers. So the council has approved this application even though they acknowledge that it will affect the quality of life for local residents. Number seventy four, the council states there are only fourteen covers outside in the courtyard area and yet the noise management plan state twenty. Even six people, the difference of six people's voices will impact on the area on a daily basis. Number seventy five, the council states that there are other similar businesses in the road, but the only one business uses that uses the courtyard is Bread Sauce and that is only open till six P M. It's not licensed, only sells coffee and cakes. So people stay for an hour and so, and so there are only a handful of tables outside. Number seventy six, the council states that noise management plan by unqualified in acoustics Gavin Tempest is not necessary and yet they have wasted taxpayers' time and money analysing it. What was the point in that? Number seventy eight, licensing was approved for number ninety one, but the appeal was halted by Gavin Tempest who threatened me and Gitos with legal action, which was that the applicant would sue on the basis that Dennis Turan would suffer loss of business. The appeal was therefore withdrawn. If we had prevented the licensing, the planning would not be here needed to go ahead as the business would not seemingly be viable. In addition, licensing would also have the potential to increase the already high level of antisocial behaviour, which is on the rise in Norwich and is as in, as is constantly written about in the.
You can wind up now if possible, you had nearly four minutes. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I, I, I just feel a lot of people have gone on longer than I have.
And we have been timed everyone.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Right, officers, anyone want to come back on any of the points raised?
Yes, thank you Chair. I mean, I have a lot of sympathy with some of the issues that the objectives have raised. But as I did with the previous application, the existing and the proposed use class both fall within class E. So they're not development and don't need planning permission. The reference in class seventy three to a change in use, yes, there is a change in use, but those uses are within the same use class. So planning permission is not required to go from retail to cafe. So under the, under the existing planning regulations, we can only consider what is development. And that's the physical changes to the building, the, the awning, the flu, the toilet installation, the change to the step. But those are what is that form the basis of the planning application. The listed building application covers other things about the internal arrangement as well as some of those things. But the main issue from arising from the objections is something that we cannot cover as the local planning authority because it is not development and planning permission is not required. And that is, whilst we may not like it, that, that is a matter of fact. So we have to limit ourselves to the impact of the physical changes, the, you say, the awning, the flu, the work to provide the, the, the toilet and the alterations to the step. We, we are not considering the change of use because it is not development that requires the consent of the local planning authority. It's permitted development. It's the change of, change of use within, within the same use class. It can happen without reference to this council. And if we were having this discussion in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, then it would be different because they were in two different use classes, but they're not now. They're in the same use class. So unfortunately, our consideration of the proposals is limited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've all answered questions now. Anyone got any questions? I, I have a few. Hold on a minute, toilets. Is there a regulation about how many seats or people you can have in a place and only have one toilet or two toilets? I thought there was regulations coming to say you had to have somebody.
They, they, they would fall under the building regulations. So it's, it's, I can't tell you whether or not they comply with the building regulations for, or indeed any other regulations about the numbers of toilets, but.
I just have a lot, lot of seats in the room for one toilet.
There's two, there's two, there's one on the ground floor and one on, and one on the first floor. So there's two, there, there, there's, there's two toilets. But again, Chair governed by a separate set of regulations, not planning.
Okay. Casper Young.
Well, I just want to, based on what you've just said about the, you know, how we're limited here because they, they can change this to a cafe. Whatever, whatever we say today. So we can't help with the democracy around that element of it, that, that is just there as a, a national agreement. It, it does seem, yeah, really it is going to have a negative impact on the community to have such activity in the courtyard like this. Is there any way we can refuse this application based on the physical changes that would be required to enable the courtyard to be used in that way? Like, I guess if we could say all the infrastructure around the canopy, the outside toilet, if we were to refuse that based on the, I mean, can we refuse that? Because we don't want the courtyard to be used as a, a loud social, what basically would be like part, a party space with alcohol until late into the night. Are, are we able to do that?
Haven't been used before.
Okay. Just, just cover, just, can I just cover? Okay, can I just cover councillor Young's point? You can't refuse the physical alterations because they enable a noisy use. You can refuse them if you think their impact in and of themselves is unacceptable, but not because they enable a noise use because, as I say, they, they, they can put tables and chairs in that courtyard tomorrow. And we have no control as a local planning authority over that. You, we, it, it is one of those circumstances where the changes in, in the use class order basically transfer the control in terms of noise and disturbance from the planning process to the licensing process. So that, 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 that is, that is not something that we have any control over. We didn't instigate it. It's not Norwich City Council's policy. It's a national thing. It's, it's enshrined in regulations. There's not a lot we can do about it. Sorry Keith, your, your, your point was, has it been used previously? It was used in association with a planning application granted in two thousand and four. And it was conditioned so that it finished at eight. But that was back in the day when they did need planning permission to go from shop to retail, they then, sorry, retail to cafe. And then they went back to shop, which also required permission. But between them going back to a shop in two thousand and twelve and now the use classes have changed. So they can go from shop to cafe without planning consent. I don't know about the music.
Can I just add? The music is currently not proposed in the courtyard. So the licensing also restricts the use of any music or speakers outside the courtyard. So the, the current proposal is proposing only music inside the building and not in the courtyard.
Sorry for the residents of Watling Court actually. It's going to be, it is going to be a massive shock from going from silence to, you know, a cafe with outside use, but, but we, but we can't stop that whether we, whether we decide to say yes or no to an outside toilet and, and the builders, we, we can't stop that. But residents can request a variation to the premises licence through, through the licensing committee, but unfortunately the use of, of the cafe or the outside space can go ahead whether, whether we agree today or not. So the, a lot of the issues here are actually issues that need to, need to be brought to licensing committee. I don't think there's a lot we can do in this, in this situation to, to address the, the amenity for residents because it's, it's already, it's already within the use class. It's not asking for, for anything different than it's already entitled to do. You can request a variation. Yeah. Yeah, you can request a variation to a premises licence and, and also if there is noise, it can be brought into the licensing committee. And if the noise is excessive, the licence can be revoked.
But do we have to put it there?
No. No. People can write in and, and, and complain.
A bit different than in sort of mean. Councillor Henry.
Yes, I agree with councillor Davis. So we have to operate as a planning committee using planning law and obviously includes the use classes. And I, I regret that I, I can't see what we can actually do as a planning committee in regards to, I don't understand the concerns of the residents, but I think it would be far better if they approached it through the licensing process.
Thank you very much David. Did you want to say anything else before we move to the vote? Councillor Davis. Yep.
And we can't condition hours on the courtyard even, can we? No, that's, that's, there's nothing we can do, is that's all down to licensing. Yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted.
Again, I'm asking for your help here and whether there is anything we can say. For example, I mean, I know it says that the flu, because of the insulation of carbon filters and a silencer, it's not going to be a problem. Can we be really sure of that? I, I suppose the expert evidence is saying it won't smell. Is that right? It won't be an issue.
Sorry, yes, short answer is yes. I mean, there's nothing really particularly unusual about installing a flu on a cafe. They, 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 they can, they, they reduce smells. So we're, we're proposing a condition to secure the details of, of, of that flu. So, and we'll do that with colleagues in environmental protection. So it'll, it'll do what it needs to do.
But we can't see.
No, because the, the, the whole purpose of it is not to create smells. If you didn't, if you just had a vent out the kitchen, then you'd have a problem. But they're proposing to install a flu in order to comply with environmental health legislation, which will have to meet the, which will have to do what, what it, what it is required to do to disperse odours and smells. And it'll also need to be, I mean, for example, if, if it involves any any equipment, it'll be installed on anti vibration mount so that, so noise will be, will be minimised as well. So, so sorry, the, 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 the short answer to your question is, is, is that isn't a reason for refusal.
Having one outside toilet, I know that there, I know there's other toilets they can use on the first floor, but one outside toilet will inevitably mean that people will be queuing outside it. Even, they won't necessarily leave the queue to go up and see if the upstairs one is available. They're just going to stay outside there. So people will congregate in the back, causing noise and door slamming. Can we refuse it on those grounds?
There's, yeah, and I, I think there's two slightly different, well, I, I heard two slightly different questions. One was how many toilets does the premises you need? And my response to that was that's not a planning issue. I think councillor Long, Young's, sorry, question was, is having an outdoor outside toilet in that location going to need, need to noise and disturbance? I mean, our view is that it won't because first of all, anybody, certainly people in the, in, in, in the back of the building will be able to see whether it's occupied or not. And there, there is another facility upstairs. So I don't, I, I don't see that it's going to, it's a relatively small cafe restaurant. And I don't see that the, 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 it's going to lead to necessarily queuing in that particular location. So to, our view as officers is, is that that location is acceptable.
Can we, just trying to see what I can do to help the residents here. Can we add any? Yeah. Yeah. But sorry, I just had something that was more physical. It, can we have any conditions around the sorts of door or, or, or flush that's used on the toilet so there'll be no, no noise? So the door won't slam, for example? That, that, is that already there? Or can we add it in?
So are you talking about doors, the door slamming? So it's a soft closed door or something like that? I'm, yes, we could attach a condition to that effect. Because that does relate to the development in, in, in question. I think it would be because the replay, if, if you, the type of loo that goes in there is not development. So if they chose to change it, I don't, and I'd quite honest, I don't know whether there's a low volume toilet, if you know what I mean. But yes, we could put a condition on that the, the door should be. I'm sure there's a mechanism that you can get so that you can't actually slam it. You can do it for kind of kitchen drawers and things like that. So I'm sure you can do it for an outside for, for, for a door. So yeah, we could do that.
Yes, can I add to that particularly around glass in the bin?
I don't think the, the, the bin issue would necessarily would be done by licensing. I mean, we could ask for a management plan by condition which could specify the hours when the bins are filled handles. I think you could do it through planning because it's a physical structure that's part of this application and, and you, you, you can control how it, how it is used. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, as I say, I think we can do it by a management plan.
That's what I have, Chair. I've got it so that we've got the soft closed doors for the toilet and it asks that a management plan be created for bin storage so that the, and
Waste management.
And waste management, sorry, that, and that they are built at the appropriate time to reduce neighbourhood disruption and from amenity.
Thank you.
I didn't see it there, sorry councillor. So that's unanimous to confirm Chair, members. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.